Earlier than right now. By four o'clock, you know when it, when four o'clock comes around, because all of a sudden you hear everything just like go silent. Okay, I have it up.
I did talk to Tony today, so.
Yeah, hey, what happened to him the other night?
Uh, yeah, I guess he had to work, yeah, or it was late when he got home from, and he just missed the meeting.
Okay, that because I, he, he's usually, um. I didn't know, or he would usually say something, or?
He said he forgot all about it. I said, well, we had to cover it, so.
Yeah.
Hey, the host has disabled the video. The host has stopped the video. Alrighty then. Is there a reason the video is stopped?
Uh, Mr. Voight, the, the director of technology is looking into that.
Thank you.
You can come in.
Ooh, whoo, these are yours. Ooh, that I was hurt.
Two of them are kind of propelled, if they're the Democrats, two of the Democrats in the House, that live in, against, winter, uh, heat, and cold, drunken, every, of you, good, and suffering.
In the Muhlenberg community, all of our teachers, our staff, our school board, our parents, our guardians, they have been phenomenal here since March 13th, when the governor put us into a situation that no one could have ever imagined or expected. Now, since we've gone through that process from March until the end of the school year, as I've said, minute by minute, hour by hour, day by day, as the issues arise and change, so do our answers. One particular item that has been up on our website for the last month is our Health and Safety Plan largely encompasses when children will be back in school in a traditional setting, but we need to meet the guidelines from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and make sure that our Health and Safety Plan is appropriate. And I think they've done a good job, given the circumstances that we have. At one point here, I will go to our pandemic coordinator to give a brief overview of that plan. One thing for sure, this has left all 500 school districts in quite a situation. As I've said in my message to the community last week, there's no good decision. It's one bad decision after another bad decision because nothing meets a traditional environment for learning for our kids. Nobody wants to see the children in their classrooms, in their teachers, in a normal, traditional setting more than myself and I'm sure all of you. But given COVID-19 and the pandemic, in the daily, at times hourly, changes from positions, not only from Harrisburg, but from the CDC, the World Health Organization, and our own Department of Health, we found ourselves in a situation that at times seemed to be impossible, not only for the Muhlenberg School District, but for the other 499 school districts in the Commonwealth. We have three options. Those three options are a traditional opening, and those that choose would choose a virtual option can do so. I would strongly urge anyone that would be choosing a virtual option to utilize the Muhlenberg School District Virtual School. Charter school legislation has not changed in Harrisburg. It'd be quite a burden, not only on the school district, but the taxpayers, when those dollars do not stay in the Muhlenberg School District, but leave our school district only to support another charter school. I'm fearful that over the next year regarding charter school and virtual learning, it might become an unbearable expense, not only to the Muhlenberg School District, but to all school districts, especially those that have been in hot zones regarding COVID-19, and the burden that it will place on schools. Our second option is a hybrid option. I had mentioned that that won't work in the Muhlenberg School District simply from a systemic and diametric point. We can't manage that on a lean staff and a lean administrative staff, not to mention that synchronous and asynchronous learning becomes quite a controversial element to justify. And I'll ask Dr. Futri to expand on that as well. Given COVID-19 and the pandemic, and what I've seen with most of the school districts and those that are flipping right now, and those that are watching us this evening, and given the state and the status right now with the new metric that was released, a virtual option, virtual learning for our children with our teachers, our staff, present in their classrooms and in their buildings, would give our children a sense of normalcy and would give five days of synchronous education consistently, as opposed to asynchronous where something is handed to them and you run for three days. That works in college, and it certainly does work with some of our more advanced kids, but it certainly is not a one size fits all and will not fit the majority of our kids. There's nothing more important than the relationships that are built between teachers and students and students with other classmates. As I had mentioned earlier last week, I'm fearful for our country. I'm fearful for our democracy in the United States of America. I think it's really important that we have a strong public education system, and as we navigate through COVID-19 and we watch the statistics and the metrics, I know at some point we will get back to a sense of normalcy. That is not right now. Year after year, according to Gallup polls, I had shared this with a couple of my colleagues that are on the board, year after year, for the last 30-plus years, parents have not indicated that they thought was my son getting the best possible education in algebra, was he maximizing the chem lab? No. Their concerns was always, is my child safe at school? When those surveys went out, it was mostly for issues of bullying and violence. No one wants to see anyone get hurt in a school, nobody. Now, with the new polls that have been out, is my son or daughter going to be safe at school regarding this virus? Things certainly have changed. I want to ask it this time. I have a few more comments to make as to where we are going with education, but I'll reserve them here for a little bit later. This time, I'm going to ask Dr. Futri to present our options and to expand on those items, and so we can return after that.
Good evening, everyone, Board members, Muhlenberg community. So this evening, we had the pleasure of presenting our reopening options and our considerations for everyone to see and for the board to make a decision. We first headed up a pandemic team. It was led by Kevin Venino, and I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Venino and let him explain the pandemics team, their role, who they were comprised of, and some of the things they came up with. So, Mr. Venino, you want to take this over?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Futri. About middle of June, the pandemic team began, and we had a great group of district administrators, building administrators, the Berks County Intermediate Unit, the people handling transportation and facilities. Kathy Bauer, our school nurse, was a pivotal part on the medical side and health side. Really like to thank the teachers who were involved, Kachina Martin, Tara Nelson, Nicole McGowan, Amy Shirelli, Christina Lilis, and Giuliana Ciccarelli, because we really worked on a collaborative effort to get this accomplished. And like Dr. Metro alluded to earlier, things were changing constantly in the month of June and July of what the guidelines will be. So, meeting every week, weighing in what ifs and different scenarios. We feel really confident we put together a Health and Safety Plan that will be safe for all staff, all students, when they enter the Muhlenberg School District buildings. So, just some highlights of the plan. Governor Wolf, his order requiring face coverings will be followed and mandated at all times. Face masks and shields will be provided for all staff and students in the event that ones misplaced or they forget to bring it to school. Our classrooms will be adequately spaced with respect to spacing. There will be barriers when teachers are working in small groups for added protection. There'll be multiple entrances when students enter the building. One of the main things to be concerned about are large group gatherings. And I really want to reach out to high school administration and middle school administration, Mr. Mish and Mr. Ebert, and your team of working together, and how can we avoid large congregations of students particularly waiting for buses before and after school? And the IU was pivotal. We were meeting, and we came up with a great plan to avoid those large group gatherings, which is something that we do not want to happen in our schools. Next slide, please. All staff and students will be expected to follow current CDC and PA Department of Health guidelines with respect to masks, social distancing, and hygiene practices. Targeted case management of regular and specialized students with chronic illnesses, life-threatening allergies, and complex needs. Our nurses are very aware of students in our buildings who have medical issues, who need to be monitored very closely when coming into our buildings. Next slide, please. And I'd like to reach out to Ken Patterson, our Director of Facilities, and his staff have done an incredible job making sure our buildings are clean and sanitized and common areas are clean and sanitized. So, thank you, Ken, your staff. They did an outstanding job. We will promote in the classrooms the proper hand hygiene practices and supplies, reinforcement of masks and social distancing. There will be ample signage throughout our buildings with the safety protocols present for all to view and abide by. Obviously, when you're dealing with this type of pandemic, it's very important that you limit the nonessential visitors and volunteers into your buildings. If a parent needs to come into a building for a pickup or a drop off, obviously, you will need to abide by the guidelines in our Health and Safety Plan. There will be modifications, obviously, to recess and what phys ed and musical programs will look like. And as Dr. Matrula alluded to before, parents will have the full virtual option available to them if they do not feel it's safe to come back to our schools. And I highly recommend our Muhlenberg Virtual School. We began last August, and I am leading the charge with this, and we are trying to eliminate the amount of students in our district enrolling into charter schools. So, that is my piece. If anybody has any questions, like I said, our team did an incredible job. I just want to reach out to them, and it was an unbelievable collaborative effort in getting this accomplished.
Yes, I have a question, Kevin. When the kids come back to school, what are you going to do with the buses? How many kids will be on the buses?
Okay, okay. Thank you, Rick. Great question. The IU, when we put a survey out, many, many parents said that they do receive transportation from Muhlenberg and will elect not to use our transportation, but we still need to roster those students on buses, and buses will have 48 passengers, okay? But we'll be using maximum spacing when feasible. At this time, we don't know what our buses would look like. To be honest with you, some of our elementary runs had sometimes 72 passengers on them, which is the maximum. That will not be happening this school year when the students come back, because that's too many people and the distancing is not practical.
So, how do you get all the kids to school then?
How are you getting all the kids to school?
Well, they will be rostered on a bus, and we will, you know, make sure the distancing is practical and accessible.
That doesn't answer the question, Kevin. How do you get all the kids? If you've got 70 kids on a bus, and you're only going to allow 48?
We will create additional runs.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, the elementary, good question, Mark. The elementary, we talked about, obviously, 72 students on a bus is not going to happen, is taking that bus ride and having multiple runs at that time. Sorry for the, what's the answer here? Or the reply to, I'm sorry, I'm lost for words, Mark.
That's okay.
But, good question.
Okay, all this is, all this is obviously dependent on when, not if, when we go back.
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Venino, good job. Proud of your work and your efforts, and proud of the pandemic team, all of our teachers and staff and participants. Thank you. Dr. Futri, let's lead into the professional side of this, sir.
You got it. Thank you, Dr. Matrula. So, we also, on the other end, we are prepared to go with any of these three pathways that Dr. Matrula outlined. Each pathway, though, presents a different series of challenges and obstacles that have to be overcome, but I want to be clear, we are prepared to do that. We do require some professional development for our staff, regardless of the pathway that is selected. And obviously, the first one is to make sure that our pandemic plan is well-understood by our staff, all those protocols, the safety measures. We need to make sure everyone's up to speed on that so we can have a successful start of the school year regardless of the pathway. Another big thing that we really need to make sure happens is mental health. As we, as everyone knows, just going through the whole COVID-19 since March, you know, a lot of people have been struggling, and one thing that we know we're really pushing is the mental health aspect of it, not only for students, but also our staff members. So, we need to be there to be able to support our students regardless of the pathway that we go, and our staff, regardless of the pathway we go. Another hurdle that we have to overcome is the remote learning. If we, if the board selects to go with the virtual option, we have, you know, 280 teachers that did not go to school to learn how to teach remotely. They went and learned how to teach face-to-face. So, now, we had, we dipped our toe in the water last year. We did a solid job of delivering instruction from March until the end of the school year, but more is expected, and our teachers know that. So, we have to ramp up our professional development prior to the start of the school year to get them prepared to deliver high-quality instruction. And the last thing that we need to do from a professional development standpoint is really focus on relationships. You heard Dr. Matrula say earlier, you know, that's the key ingredient to successful teaching, is that student, the teacher relationship. And we need to, whatever pathway we go, that's going to be a hurdle that we have to overcome, but it's something that we are going to focus on. So, we're there to support our kids and really, and really make the education as personalized as possible. So, that's our four key areas that we're focusing on from a professional development standpoint. Next slide, Dan. So, now, as Dr. Matrula stated, we have three pathways that the school district has considered. And again, we are prepared for any of those three pathways. The first one, obviously, is the full traditional reopening of school like we've done in a, for the past, you know, 100 years, but we're going to include a virtual school option with that. In that pathway, we are expecting all students and staff to be on site. We'll follow the Muhlenberg School District pandemic plan. All our buildings will be open for in-person instruction. Any student who is not comfortable with coming back to school, we will allow them to enroll in our Muhlenberg Virtual School. And I could tell you that our building principals have spent a considerable amount of time developing procedures and protocols to limit social distancing in a full traditional setting. When I say considerable time, they spent the entire summer working on how can we do this with 4,000, you know, almost 4,500 students in our district? How are we going to make this happen? So, that legwork has happened. We have a lot of modifications that went into place. All of those are part of our pandemic plan, which Mr. Venino has had posted online. But again, it does pose us with some barriers, you know, some obstacles that we have to overcome, but that's the first pathway. The second pathway that Dr. Matrula talked about was the hybrid option. And in a hybrid option, we're looking at two days of in-person instruction and three days of virtual instruction. Given that same plan, we will follow the Muhlenberg School District pandemic plan. Our schools will be open for in-person instruction with all staff and a portion of our students on-site at a time. Our principals, our building principals and school administrators, again, have spent a considerable amount of time just splitting the students up so we have, so we won't exceed 60% of the students in a hybrid model coming on any particular day. That's quite an undertaking when you consider that, you know, we wanted to make sure that any student who had siblings, those students would come to school on the, you know, the same days together, so you wouldn't have a kindergartner at home by themselves and seventh grader coming to school. So, the principals have gone through, done all that legwork. That took a considerable amount of time, but in that, in that setting, like we said, Monday and Tuesday, one group of students would come, and then Thursday and Friday, another set of students would come. You know, as Dr. Matrula alluded to, in that, in that setting, we're actually asking teachers to do two different things at once, and that, that is very difficult. As I mentioned, you know, our, most, no teachers have gone to school to learn how to do that. That is going to be the hardest part about delivering a true, you know, hybrid-type model that has the blended learning, that you can guarantee that your kid's going to get 180 days of instruction. That's going to be very difficult for a teacher to do it. I'm not saying our teachers can't do it, but it's going to take some time to get us there to be able to deliver that. And, you know, beyond that, I mean, also, systemically and diametrically, it poses a lot of challenges to us to really effectively and efficiently carry that off from the get-go. The third option we have is a full virtual learning pathway. Under that pathway, we would, again, follow the Muhlenberg School District pandemic plan. All students will be instructed through a virtual model. Our staff members will deliver the instruction from their classrooms to really replicate an authentic learning condition and experience for, for our students. We would have our staff and our students follow a normal bell schedule, you know, with school starting, if depending, Eric, to high school, 7:30, and ending at 2:30. If I'm an elementary student, I'd start at 8:50 and end at 3:25. So, the thing with the full virtual learning is we really want to replicate the authentic experience a kid would get to come to school. The difficulty last year with having the virtual option was, you know, from a teacher perspective, you were on call 24/7 with assignments and whatnot. And as a parent, you know, we, the assignment would be released, and you're expecting the parent then to work with the child to complete the activity or assignment. Having everybody on-site allows the teacher to actually teach and the parent to actually be a parent and not have to spend time trying to have the student figure it out. So, you know, that is a plan we're comfortable with pulling off. It will require us to move a professional development day to the front of the school year, so we can have one more day of training for our teachers. But it is something, like I said, that, you know, we can, we can hopefully maximize 180 days of instruction for our, for our students and also our staff. And Dr. Matrula, that's, that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions at this time for Dr. Futri?
I have a question. What would we do if somebody needs some extra help in that? Would it be able to come in if we go with number three?
So, if we go with number three, just like we have normal school time, we'd have our staff on-site. You could have an appointment with the teacher during, or instructional assistant, but we would handle it the same way like if a kid needs help in school. How do they get it? They meet with their teacher. So, yes, we would make every option and effort possible to support our students.
One would have to come in after school then, or can they come in?
Well, we would, we wouldn't ask them to come in at that point in time. We would have, we would have the teacher through a Google Classroom or a Google Meet, they'd be able to conference, just like we're doing right now. You'd be able to see the student face-to-face.
And did you, I heard some people had trouble getting internet. Does all our kids get the internet out here?
Dan, how, you may maybe to, can better explain that, but I do know there are several hotspots throughout Muhlenberg Township, Laureldale area. And I know we will also look at possibly using the library, if we can use that as a place that people could come in and pick up the internet. But Dan, I don't know, do you know what percent of our students have the internet?
I don't have an exact percentage, but one of the things we did do is put up on the website the various vendors and what they offered. And Comcast has opened up a number of their hotspots that they have throughout the township that are available to connect to free, whether or not you have an account with Comcast or not.
I just want to thank all the administrators and teachers for doing a good job with that. Thanks again.
So, I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Tony.
Do, what about the teachers? Do they, do they have to come in, or do they have the option, whether they want to come in or not, as do some of the students?
So, if we would go with the virtual, the virtual pathway, we are asking our teachers to come in to replicate those authentic learning conditions. If somebody would have a, you know, they're, they're have a pre-diagnosed condition or something like that, that's something that, you know, we would certainly work with our teachers. We want them to be safe, too, you know, and we would follow our pandemic plan to accommodate anyone that needed it.
Thank you.
So, yeah, question for me. As far as what option for opening, I don't, I don't see that we have a lot of choices, given that Berks County, like everybody else, I think, in the state is in the, what the state's calling the moderate category. And if we have concerns about the hybrid or what the state calls blended, then the only option I see we have is the full remote. So, having said that, I know other districts are going virtual as well. I know Redding just had a really long meeting the other night. They ended up not bringing their teachers in. I'm not sure, I think Antietam is virtual. I don't know whether they're bringing their teachers in. What are other districts doing, and why do we think it's safe for our teachers to come in and say Redding doesn't? I'll use the analogy of college football, where the Big Ten and the Pac-12 decided it wasn't safe for their teams to play, and yet the ACC and the SEC and the Big 12 all seem to think it's safe. So, what do, you know, what do others, what do they know that we don't know? What do we know that they don't know? You understand my question?
I understand it. Dr. Futri, if you don't mind, I'll respond to Mr. Nelson.
Okay.
Okay. Mark, it's not that they know something that we don't know. We have 4,080 children in our school district. We have an incredible, an incredible staff. And after what we experienced on March 13th, clear to the end of that school year and over the summer, there's no question that we think a sense of normalcy with the children and our teachers being here on campus in their classrooms is the best thing for our kids to learn. As far as safety is concerned, they're not going to be in a more safe environment than that. They're the only ones that are going to be in their classroom. Perhaps some of them will have paraprofessionals, and those paraprofessionals can distance themselves six feet away from the teacher and provide that additional instruction. That cannot happen if the teachers are not here on the Muhlenberg campus. And I know our teachers care very, very much. No one wants them to be more safe than I do. I certainly don't want anyone in a precarious situation. But I did say yesterday, and I'm sure you know, if you can go out to Redner's Giant, go to the farmer's market. Boy, did I see plenty there.
Yeah, I don't go anymore.
Yeah, huh?
I don't go anymore.
You don't go? Well, you're, of course. No, I like the farmer's market. I don't want anybody, I love the farmer's market, great people.
I do, too, but I don't go anymore for certain reasons.
Yes, it's, I see our staff there. And I'm not judgmental. Yes, it's, uh, I, I see our staff there. Uh, and I'm not judgmental about it. Uh, I know if you can do that and pull your mask down and talk, uh, you certainly are taking a chance there. That's not the case here. You saw the pandemic plan. The teachers would come in, they'd have their mask on. Uh, and I, uh, as far as feeding them, uh, it would be kind of like a hospital. You, you, if on Friday, if you do, you were going to eat on Monday, uh, you could get a hot meal here if you would opt to leave and come back. That's certainly fine as well. Uh, for our children and for the sense of normalcy of our teachers, it is, it's, I think it's the right thing to do. And as far as safety is concerned, there is not going to be any place safer here than their own home, given the fact that they're going to be here by themselves. And our wonderful staff will be disinfecting that, the, the buildings and where they're at, uh, every day. The other thing you got to keep in mind, as I said just a moment ago, they don't come in. There's forty-nine paraprofessionals that are not going to be able to assist our kids. There are cafeteria workers that very easily could be feeding our staff with nutritious meals. Uh, I talked to Perry Klein. He's, he's, I'll do what I need, I need to do and, and get our, our, our teachers, uh, the food that they need. But there are an awful lot of workers that, um, will not be providing services for our kids. The main thing is that assistance that our kids need, which kind of leads into a piece here, I'll, I'll, I'll turn to Dr. Rutt here very shortly. But why I think it's important that they're here and they will be safe, they will, uh, uh, be safe distancing uh, in this environment, again, uh, i- if you can come here, uh, it's far more safer than anywhere else that you have to go just to cohabitate. And some of the teachers that have, have seen me, they're all for it. Um, I'm concerned about our kids. I'm concerned about uh, where we're going to be here educationally. We, we're already looking at some serious regression across the country, not just Muhlenberg. Uh, I know some schools are, are, are entertaining it. In the last couple of days, Mark, and all the rest of the board members, some of our schools, they already flipped to, to full virtual. And, yep, yeah, they're, they're entertaining, uh, whether or not, uh, they should bring people in. Uh, we can set a safe distance here and, uh, and, and they would be, uh, in a healthy, healthier environment than anywhere else, given our marvelous, uh, maintenance staff. Uh, I did have a conversation, uh, with, uh, the steward and, um, now he agreed with me as well. Hey, you know, uh, if we can provide additional, additional assistance for our kids by having our paraprofessionals here, I think we're a step above. We're not doing that the other way. And anything anyone else chooses to do outside of here, well, I can't control that. You can't, nobody in here can control that. So that's pretty much where I stand with that with you. And I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the clarification.
Question, Dr. Marterella?
Yes, sir.
If we go virtual and quite frankly, I, for the safety of everyone, I lean in that direction. One of the things that we will be overly dependent on is whether students will actually plug in. Uh, one of the things that very large school districts, and this has been reported on the air, have not provided the technology for students at home. We have done that. Uh, but we also now have to depend on students and especially very young students to actually plug in, be online and do the assignments the teachers are asking them to do. And in this particular model, I'm not quite sure how we do that.
Well, i- i- if you look at the last three months, sir, uh, I, I know a lot of people are very happy and you'll say, hey, they did a great job. Our teachers did a great job. They really did. We were thrilled into that. I don't want to replicate that again. Uh, we need, we need to improve and get better. Our, our State Department of Education wants us to do the same thing. We don't need to, to, to be told that to know that we should do that. Uh, and I know Dr. Futrick and our team have been looking at ways to address that and the fact that there is absenteeism. Uh, we will continue to work with this, uh, and, and given the, the situation, uh, I understand what you have said. As I said earlier, uh, it, it's just one bad decision after another, after another. There's no good thing here. This is the better of all of those bad options that you have. And somebody's going to be angry. There's no question about it. There are people that are not going to be happy no matter what is chosen. But for the sake of safety, uh, that's the route we have to go. We're going to have to work and have our, uh, community liaison also work with the, the parents to reach out. Uh, I know, uh, Dr. Futrick, uh, has had conversations with our counselors. We've got wonderful counselors and, uh, and Zach Milch, our behavior specialist. They're all, what can we do to get you to be more proactive and to engage with that learning mod, mo- model? Um, i- i- it's just another stamp on one side as to why I'm a traditionalist and believe that there's nothing like that one-to-one interaction. Giving COVID nineteen and the guidelines, and I received some guidelines from Solicitor, uh, Bowlin here. And quite frankly, um, I'm looking at from an HR standpoint and the human resource side that I, I, I don't even know how we would be able to address them, uh, if something was to go, uh, in a direction with COVID nineteen, uh, that would be unsafe for our kids. Uh, so I do agree with you. There has to be some more engagement there. Uh, I know they've been strategizing on this, but there are staff that will be reaching out to those parents to see what we can do, how we can help you to, uh, to better that experience.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go to, uh, to Dr. Rutt. Uh, one, one of my concerns, uh, is our special education. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I mean, there's nothing, there, there's no sugar coating. It, it's blunt force, truth, conversation, transparency. Now, these poor kids, uh, that need assistance, uh, there's no better way for us to even assure that uh, than with the virtual model synchronous five-day-a-week education. Uh, and given what we have learned from solicitors and other law firms as to what steps that we should be taking under the federal guidelines, there's nothing like someone working with our kids. And, um, we're given an option that we certainly have to make the best of, but not one that I want and not one that I know, uh, our, our district wants. So Dr. Rutt, regarding special education and our, and our children that, that that have intellectual disabilities, and how important it is for us to, to help these kids, please share what steps we will be taking regarding our nearly eight hundred special education children.
Of course. Thank you, Dr. Metrola, Dr. Futrick. Uh, good evening to everybody. Um, he, Dr. Metrola laid it out perfectly. Um, we, we are still required to provide a free, appropriate public education to, to our students. Um, the best way we can do that in, in a virtual environment is synchronous instruction. Um, you've probably heard that term many times over the, over the past few months. Um, and really what it means is, is live instruction, kind of just like we are here. Um, the teacher, the teacher, teacher's classroom becomes a computer screen. Um, it is not the most ideal. Um, but as we've all said, you know, COVID nineteen didn't, we didn't bring it. We don't want it. Um, but it does allow us to be safe. My, the, the staff at Muhlenberg, the paraprofessionals at Muhlenberg, whether they're in the special ed department or not, I, I can't imagine a better, a better group of educators to go into this with. Um, it's a challenge. It is going to be a challenge, uh, but they will rise to that challenge. Um, I know in talking to some of my staff members, they, 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 they're starting to see the benefits of it. Um, I think some of them are going to turn out to be better educators when it's all said and done. Um, so we, we are prepared to provide faith. We will continue to work at it as best we can. Um, we will, we will monitor, we will stay on top of it, but our, but our teachers can do it. Um, I, I, I would want them to do this more than anybody I've ever worked with.
Any questions for Dr. Rutt regarding special education?
I'd like to say something. I don't know if the people know, our Vo-Tec meeting was on Monday night, the Vo-Tec, we're going with the teachers, going to be at school and their kids will be at home. We're going to do Verger at Vo-Tec. We approve our, the Vo-Tec meeting Monday night. I just want to tell the board that.
Thank you, Rick.
I have a question. Maybe it's for, uh, the counselor, but are we protected legally through any of this stuff?
Yeah, I, that, that's a great question and, uh, it's probably the subject of an entire seminar, to be honest with you. But, um, yes, I think that the, the, the more that you look at the guidance that's out there, that guidance, um, forms up what would be considered the standard of care. Um, and the more you examine it and the more you make your decisions based on what that guidance is, what the standard of care is that's being put out there, um, the less likelihood you have of any kind of liability. Understanding that you come from a position of immunity under the subdivisions, uh, Political Tort Claims Act. So you don't come from a position of having liability attached, um, as easily as a private company. Um, but there are, there are exceptions to it. And one of them is the care, custody and control of real estate. And the other is something called the state-created danger theory. Um, and I think as long as you're looking carefully, like you're doing right now, at the guidance and carefully considering it, making your decisions, I think you're in good shape. If you just say, I see all the guidance, I hear all this stuff, you know, damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead, then you start to run into some, some problems. But what you're doing tonight, um, is, is right on, right on the money. It's, it's perfectly on target.
Thank you. Any other questions for, uh, Dr. Rutt? Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
The Dr., Dr. Moyer. Dr. Moyer?
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, briefly, uh, I know there's some things that were floating around today. Uh, let, let's, let's put everyone at ease where we are and with PIA. Uh, yeah, we know how important it is for kids to interact with each other, uh, in our extracurriculars, uh, sports. Uh, please, just, it's just a brief update here where we are today.
Oh, considering the, the number of students that we do have that participate in either a, uh, interscholastic sport uh, or a, um, or some kind of club or activity, uh, obviously these things are, are vital in, in helping get our kids to school, um, hook them into the entire experience, uh, and give them opportunities, uh, beyond just the, the classroom experience. So, uh, one of the things that came up today, I had received a phone call from, uh, Mike Drego, the Reading Eagle. And, uh, he had, uh, asked if, uh, there was any truth to the rumor that we would be opting out of sports and activities for the fall. Uh, kind of caught me off guard, um, because as I was looking out the window, um, I saw our, our coaches and students working hard at voluntary workouts, uh, to prepare themselves for the fall season. Um, so I unequivocally said to him, uh, that is absolutely zero percent true. Uh, we're preparing as if, uh, the season will take place and we're going exactly by what the, the PIA uh, and the, and the state government is, 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 you know, get the guidelines they're setting forth for us to follow. Uh, so we'll continue to do that until we're told otherwise. Uh, there is a meeting, uh, once again on, uh, August the twenty-first. Not sure if anybody saw today, there was a, uh, direct letter sent from PIA to Governor Wolf and his staff, asking for a collaborative effort, uh, to try to see what, uh, options exist, uh, for the fall season. So, uh, that will be coming out, uh, on August the twenty-first. Uh, and from there, we will, uh, we will either be going full steam ahead or we will be going by whatever recommendations, uh, those two groups set forth for us.
Do we have any questions for Dr.?
I, I do. If it's decided somewhere down the road that there will be no fall sports, will the coaches still be getting their salaries or because, or will they not?
Uh, well, at some point this year, there's, there's going to be options. Um, I don't know if you've seen anything that's going on in New York, uh, Virginia. Um, they're, what they're doing is basically combining all three seasons into the, uh, later winter and spring. Um, so at some point in time, our coaches will be called upon to, uh, fulfill their duties. Uh, so I think there is going to be language in their contracts that obviously their compensation will depend upon, um, their hours put in. Um, so if they would happen to move everything till, uh, later on in the second half of the school year, that's when, uh, that would apply for our coaches.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Moyer? Thank you, Mrs. Bangle. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Moyer. Yeah, um, you know, as we continue to, uh, as we can, continue to emerge here with COVID nineteen and this pandemic, I, I must say that this, uh, that this health and safety plan um, has to be fluid and, uh, it is perpetual. Things are going to continuously change. And, uh, my, my number one concern, I know it is everyone else's, um, is staff and safety of our, uh, the safety of our children and all of our staff. Uh, one life lost is one too many. I can't emphasize our mental health and how important it is that we keep reaching out to our families. I had family, uh, on two occasions here just very recently. Uh, actually, I don't have enough, I could tell you stories right and left, but very touched by a mom. Uh, who said, uh, you know, Dr. Matrowal, we're, well, we're, we're behind, uh, the school. My daughter has asthma. I, I'm not going to send her. I, I'll, I'll, I'll look into the Muhlenberg Virtual School. What do you think? I said, you have to do what you know you should do as a parent. But if I had a daughter that had asthma and I have four kids and something dead, I wouldn't take a chance. It, you know, life is so valuable. And you can't get it back. And our kids deserve everything possible. It's just not about our children. It is, it is about, quite frankly, where we are going to be as a country as this domino continues to fall. It's pyramiding. You got to get vaccine. We've got to find a way to get this tackled. In the meantime, we got to do everything we can for our kids and our families. And we got to hope that this doesn't put a pitfall on our democracy. There's a lot to say about this. For our community members and our taxpayers that are worried and concerned, we all are. And your charter school legislation, that needs to change. Number two, our faculty, our staff reports here, they're here earning their dollar. And they're doing it the best way we can. As I said, there's no, no best answer to this and someone's not going to like it. But we have to do what is right for the greater good. It's been an honor. But it's also been something I've never seen before. And as I said, steady as she goes, we will get through this. We have to hold the line. We have to come together as one. I'd ask the board to approve this part, this, uh, uh, health and safety plan that needs to go to the state. And I would recommend, highly recommend, given health considerations and synchronous learning, that we go to option three, uh, which is total virtual, at least for the first marking period. Let's see what happens up to that point. I have a lot of naysayers out there that say it's going to go on and on and on. But let's hope that our scientists, let's hope that our global community, let's hope that our leadership in this country can, can, can get together. This is a virus. Nobody created this. Uh, we didn't create this. But it's affecting all of our lives. I learned today that a hundred and sixty thousand, uh, Americans have perished from this. And COVID nineteen is on the rise with children. I don't want to take a chance with our kids. And I don't want to take a chance with anyone else. I know it's tough. Uh, I'm, I know all nine of you, uh, are on the right thing with our kids and our staff. It's a tough decision, but that's the best one that we have. I'm going to go on to then ask Mr. Patterson for our physical plan.
Yeah, uh, Joe, before you get to that, let me ask a budget-related question.
Oh, sure.
One of our biggest dollars is busing. One of our biggest dollars is busing. And we didn't use BCIU in the spring. We're not going to use them again for the fall. I, I understand they have a certain level of fixed costs, but we need to have a conversation with them about, you know, some way either, if not a rebate, pushing the costs out so that next year, the dollar figure is less. I mean, you know, they haven't had to drive the buses. They haven't had to pay for fuel. I, I don't know whether they're paying the bus drivers, but you know, there's a, there's a whole lot of savings, if you will, unintentional that happened because of this with the bus contract. And, you know, everything else going on in the spring, maybe that wasn't the time to bring it up. Now's the time to bring it up.
Agreed. Agreed. I, I, I agree with you. And I know Shane is going to be, has been reaching out and having those conversations. We're going to continue to have those conversations. I, I, I can't disagree with you one bit. I wouldn't even try to on that. I understand that. That's one piece of it. Once again, and, and I'm not going to push on, keep talking about one thing. That's a piece, the charter school legislation, that's going to kill us. And, and all the other districts in the state that are in our vote, I'm, I'm telling you right now, in one year, it's not going to be pretty and something has to be done.
I'll be shocked. I'll be shocked if the actual for the charter payment is equal to or less than what we budgeted for this year.
Agreed. Agreed. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Is that, is that Randy?
Yeah, Dr. Matt, Randy. Yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
I can't, sir.
You can?
Yes, sir. I can hear you. I can see you too.
Oh.
I can't hear you now.
Could you speak to us? If a teacher doesn't come to work, how do we substitute for that?
Randy, say that you, you froze for about three seconds and I didn't catch the beginning.
How would a substitute situation work if a teacher doesn't come to work?
Well, definitely on, on, on the, the, the hybrid side, or not the hybrid side, the, the virtual side. If they're not at work, we will, we will, and all 18 of the school districts here are going to be fighting tooth and nail to try to find a substitute. And that's what we will try to do because they will have things set up that our teacher will be able to pass on that information if they're here. We can't do it any other way if they're not here. This is new. I can't say it's going to be flawless and I think we're going to have an awful lot of pitfalls with it. We have a better chance that with them here finding a substitute to replace them if they're out. If they're out, we can't find them. And I know all 18 school districts, we have been discussing this every day with our Zoom calls, multiple times with, with the, with our, with the IU, including those in Harrisburg at, at times and our local politicians, meaning the county. You know, it's a concern with the pool that we have right now and how that pool is being literally streamed out. I didn't get into pre-existing conditions. I, and I will say to you, I'll be overly gracious. And I know my attorney, our attorney, our attorney knows that, that we have gone out of our way to help our employees that might have any kind of medical condition. And that's something we must do and that would require perhaps a substitute. That's that HR nightmare piece that I was talking about earlier. It is a, it is a gorilla in the closet and we're going to have to address it the best we can. I'm concerned at the pool and so do, so do all the other superintendents in this county. And our substitutes just don't substitute in Berks County. They go around to all the other areas are very concerned whether or not we're going to be able to staff adequately. And if we can get our people to come to work and, and be as healthy as they can and, and kind of reduce that, that absenteeism, that'll certainly help us. But sir, that will be a challenge, not just for us, for everybody else.
Dr. Matrula?
Yes, sir.
If you get a sub, they may have difficulty knowing the system. But what you've done in the past, you've split the classes. And a number of students would be with another teacher for that day and that teacher would know the system. Would that be a way to alleviate the problem when you don't have a substitute?
It, it's certainly a, a, a pathway that we could, we could choose. I know from in the past, I don't think our, our faculty members were, were happy about the splits. And I can't blame them. I wasn't happy about it either. I know the principal wasn't happy and literally struggling. We're hoping with Kelly Services that that at least puts us in, in, in the running with the rest of the districts that use Kelly Services because of the incentives. But we certainly may have to make some adjustments with that. You know, Dr. Futrick is looking into that as well. I know it's an unpopular thing to do with our professional staff and I, I fully agree. But if, if there's a, if there's a hole in the bow of the ship, sometimes you gotta take the manual and jam it in there, if you know what I mean.
Yes.
That's something we want to do.
Another question.
Somebody did speak up.
One other question.
That Mr. Madera? Okay.
It's Randy.
Go ahead, sir.
I have a big. Can't connect.
Sir, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go on.
Okay, sir. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Patterson to give a physical plant update. Mr. Patterson?
Dr. Matrula, good evening to the board. You were all given a, a copy of what I'm going to discuss tonight in bullet point format, if you want to follow along. Both the Muhlenberg Elementary Center and the Muhlenberg Middle School took on water from the torrential rains and subsequent flooding that took place on Sunday, August 2nd and Tuesday, August 4th. Water came in from overwhelmed storm drains backing up to double glass doors in certain areas at both schools. There was very minor damage considering all of the water that the custodial crews cleaned up from both storms. Muhlenberg's custodial maintenance crews have done, have done and continue to do a great job preparing our buildings for the 2020-21 school year. MSD's fall sports student athletes have returned for voluntary workouts with limited access to restroom facilities in the high school and, and our outer buildings. Custodial crews clean and disinfect those areas where students have access daily. Just to highlight one of the many, many projects both staffs have worked on that has taken place at CE Cole's Intermediate School. The plan called for painting the hallways, the stair towers and revitalizing the terrazzo flooring building debate, all the hallways have been painted and are complete. And 60% of the flooring is complete as well. We look to complete that project before what would have been the traditional starter school, which was the end of August. We're also continuing to prepare our buildings so that both students and staff can return to a safe learning environment. We, as we have been throughout the summer, are continuing to monitor the recommendations and guidelines being set forth from the federal and state health agencies and PDE for our district. I'm proud of the outstanding job both the custodial and maintenance staffs have been doing. Again, they have been working hard every day since the shutdown began back in March. All of the LED fixtures that have been received by our district have been installed by our maintenance personnel at the various school buildings. New fixtures have been installed in Cole's Gym, Muhlenberg Middle School's Gym, High School's Gym and Auditorium hallway and lobby, Middle School's Science Wing hallway, Auditorium Lobby, the main office lobby and the Muhlenberg High School Gym and the Elementary Center Gym as well. Middle School Floor Tile Replacement Project is complete. A total of 5,000 square feet of floor tile replaced with a quartz epoxy flooring. I got to tell you, the floor looks excellent. That is all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Ken, are there any floors in any of the buildings that are still carpeted?
No, we have removed the carpeting that was in, I think there was a couple of classrooms in the high school. I think last year we had removed the last of it from the life skills room and replaced that with, with floor tile. There is some carpet on some entrances and in a couple of hallways yet. Walk-off carpet tile, which I like to put those in the vestibule areas before you walk into the main lobbies. Helps keep the flooring in the main lobbies cleaner. And the carpet tiles are, are very easy to replace if one gets damaged in those situations.
Any of the, the, the rooms that had water damage, did they have carpet on the floor?
The, the two places that, that took on water that had some carpet was the assistant principal offices at MEC. But the custodial staff did a great job of sucking that water out of the carpets and getting them to dry and, and as well there.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, this is Rick Hoffman. Did the library get water in?
The library took a severe amount of water. I don't know if Mr. Madero will bring that up in his, in his report from the library. But yes, the library took on extensive water from the, the storm on Sunday, August 2nd. We're working with them on the insurance side of things for what we're responsible for. It's covered on our end and what they're responsible for, their insurance takes care of.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. And just make sure you tell your maintenance and janitors they're doing a good job. Since, you know, they're in working since March, that's stuff. Thank you. Place nice and clean. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Ken? Okay, Mr. Hardy, I'll turn it over for item number four.
Okay. Item number four is hearing of visitors. For anyone who would like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand function, state your name and your address. Your presentation will be limited to two minutes. At the end of two minutes, your microphone will be muted. Board members, please refrain from speaking until comments are completed. Any comments from anybody? We have one. Two, we have two. Okay.
You're going to unmute Jennifer Ronaldo?
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Hello, yes. My name's Francis Renato. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Our, both of our children have IEP, speech therapy. Our son is going into third grade. Last year, he didn't get the speech that he, in the spring, when they went to the virtual. It, it wasn't provided. Will they be getting the, if we go full virtual, will they get the help that they need with the speech therapy?
Okay, Dr. Wright?
Yes, absolutely. The speech therapist will, will absolutely be providing the therapy in a format just like this. Whether it's an individual or a group, I'm not sure what, what your children get. I would also encourage you to, to give me a call tomorrow. We can talk some more about that if you need to, sir.
Okay, thank you. What was your name again? I'm sorry.
That's Dr. Dr. Strong.
Thank you, Dr. Matrula. I'm the director of special ed. Feel free to give me a call. We can discuss it. Okay, sir?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your help.
You're welcome.
Yana Keno.
You almost got it right. You're close.
No cheat, no cheat. Yeah, yeah.
Right. So my name is Katie Anakin. I have three children in the district, three different schools. My son's going into eighth grade. My middle son's going into fourth grade and my daughter is going into third grade. I have two questions. Both my husband and I work, we're working parents. Dr. Matrula, you said that there will be a, or Dr. Futrick, there would be a normal schedule. So the elementary school would be 8:50 to 3:25. And I think the comment was the purpose of that is to allow teachers to teach and parents to parent. But what happens to the children whose, whose parents are not home and the children, let's say, are at daycare during that time? What's the option for them as far as like the attendance policy if they can't sign on at that time? Are they watching taped videos at night? I mean, to, to limit the teachers' hours to eight to 3:30 or, or whatever the plan is, is terrifying to a working parent like myself. And replicating the traditional school hours to try to authenticate an in-school experience is terrifying to me also because I will not be here with them. So a parental relationship is not an instructional relationship. So it's, it's really, really scary and I just, I don't know what the plan is for students who cannot sign on live time, like you mentioned.
Dr. Futrick?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. And, and as we said earlier, there, there are some obstacles that we definitely need to, to address. Your, your heartache you have right there is the same I have. I'm a, a parent of five. I understand exactly with, with what, what you're going through. We do know that there will be some kids that are, that have trouble logging on during the, the school hours. So our assistant principals, our, our building administrators and our guidance counselors will be reaching out. We're going to have to figure out something that allows them to get their education. You know, whether, what, what that plan looks like. You know, I think it will be differentiated and it'll be based on a, on a case by case basis. But we will certainly work with families and, and parents that are in that, in that boat, very similar to what you're experiencing.
Do you happen to know the percentage of families in the district that have two working parents? My guess would be the majority, but that's, I don't have, that's not coming from anywhere but my gut.
I don't have that percentage, but I, I'm surprised if that's the case.
And so teachers, is, is that negotiable to the board? And with you guys, that the teachers' hours are limited to 8:50 to, or eight o'clock to 3:30? Like, is that set in stone, that plan? Because it seems if the teachers' hours were a little more flexible, that might benefit a lot more families.
You know, Dr. Futrick, I might, I'll, let me say this first in, in, in our conversations, in your direct conversations with our faculty. I, Katie, I would hope, I would hope that our faculty members, you know, the sense of normalcy, what we're trying to provide, as I said, you know, it, it's just not going to hit everybody the right way. I do agree with you. I think most of the parents, two parents work. Wonderful conversation with you, but also with, with other parents here. And again, my, my heart aches for everybody. It's, it's a, it's been such a hardship. I would hope, I would hope that our professional staff would be openly receptive to reaching out to help kids at another time. You know, one thing contractually, it's one thing, but I do know a lot of our teachers go above and beyond. And I would hope that that would be the case here. I can't say 100% for, for sure that every single person, because of what they might be having in their life as well. I know we have other employees that work two jobs as well. And we have staff that does that outside of our district too. So I'm not unfamiliar with the, with the situation. But I would think Dr. Futrick would agree with me that if there's something that somebody can do to help a, a child afterwards, that they would hopefully are dedicated and committed enough to do that. I, I can't imagine that not being the case unless there's something going on because they all have personal lives. I do and Dr. Futrick, father of five, a father of four. And I know what that's like. Your situation. Uh, and I know what that's like. Um, your situation breaks my heart. Um, there's no good answer for you. And uh, I said earlier, and it's not a blanket statement and it's not bold. This needs to be cured and leadership is critical here. It's not gonna solve your problem right now, but I hope that we would be able to find a way to help you. Uh, something in my gut would, as you said, terrifying, terrifying would be that you're let down. And I think there are gonna be people that are gonna feel that way. We're doing everything we possibly can. I just hope we would take the extra step with you. I think Dr. Futrick, I I think that's a conversation. Uh, yeah, we we have such gracious faculty. Uh, and again, we're we're doing the right thing. I know we're doing the right thing in my gut, given every scenario, which I said are not good. Except for being here and working with our kids and given the pandemic. That I think that they would be able to reach out and help. I really do. Uh, and I think that's maybe a conversation uh that that we can reach out uh to uh to our faculty about. But I I know in the past they've done that, uh, even when we're in our traditional uh setting. Uh, and if that was the case, I'm sure if somebody needed some help and you you, you know, they had to give you a call at seven, unless they were working and doing something else, they would do that. That's the only thing that I can say uh would answer that question right now. Uh, that you, it's a, it's a, your situation, what you shared is is almost like a no-win. Um, we know option three is the best, that best win-win. It's not something I would be happy about. But your situation, um, that it it breaks my heart because I know that you want the best for your kids. And believe me, I do too. Um, yeah, let's see what we can do.
Yeah, Dr. Metrol. Dr. Metrol, Dr. Futrick, I think we're gonna have to be flexible with schedules for the teaching staff. I mean, you know, we do have a contract. It's it's not a normal situation, so everybody is going to be flexible. And I have no doubt our teachers are gonna step up and do the best job they can, given the circumstances. But, you know, we may have to look at if a teacher has fifty percent of their kids in a class that are working, two working parents. We may have to look at, you know, some adjustment of hours so that we're not expecting them to work a double shift to take care of the kids that are there, normal time, and the kids who had to be, you know, couldn't make it to school, if you know what I'm saying. So I think, you know, that that's gonna have to be, there's gonna have to be some flexibility on everybody's part.
And I think, you know, my kids, um, am I on or I'm on mute now?
No, you're you're, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my kids, I can't say anything, I have nothing negative to say about any of the teachers um that they've had so far. Um, I think this is, and they've always been available um after hours and and either early mornings for me, knowing that I work with any of my three kids. I think the difference is that you have these teachers that have children of their own. And um, it's gonna be really difficult for them and probably very stressful to balance the time between their own children who might be learning virtually, depending on what district they live in, while they're going to school every day. So you know, it's tough and I think about my kids and I think about all all the kids in the district and, you know, if it was my vote, I I would vote to have the parents decide and if you wanna send your kid, send them. Um, but it's not my vote and and I don't sit on the board. I think that you guys have done a great job with all these plans and the governor kinda threw a wrench in it a couple of days ago, saying that he strongly suggests that everybody go virtual. So um, you know, it's, it feels like a big political game as a parent and our our children are pawns and so are we and it's really tough. And so I really appreciate all the work that you guys have put into it. I just really struggle with how, number one, virtually, you're gonna get especially the younger kids to pay attention and to be interested. Uh, what comes to mind is Mr. Baylor.
Barbie Levan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Barbie Levan. I have a son who is going to be a junior this year. And I have a a few quick questions. Um, the first thing I wanna say is thank you. Um, I am a nurse. I've seen firsthand what this virus can do to people. Um, I do work with the elderly population and not the younger generation. Um, but it is affecting everybody differently and I'm glad that um you all are taking this very seriously as far as the health and well-being of the students and the staff um at the school. And then my two questions I have are, I keep hearing the words virtual and cyber school. Um, can somebody elaborate on what the difference is between the two of those? And my my other question is, if we do all virtual, are the courses going to be limited? Or are they still, are the students still going to have access to um all of the courses, including electives that they may have chosen last year to take for this year's school year?
Barbie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the first part of that and then I'm gonna ask Dr. Futrick to to take the second part. The cyber and the virtual are are interchangeable words. Uh, the only time you gotta uh think about it is if they're saying brick, brick uh virtual or a brick uh and mortar cyber school. But the cyber and virtual uh are are interchangeable uh with meaning the same thing. Uh, the only time you gotta worry or or clarify is if it's a a brick and mortar, uh, which is a little different. But Dr. Futrick?
And to answer your your second question, uh, any any student seven, grade seven through twelve that has an elective course, a core course, uh, those courses will be replicated in the virtual environment. Uh, so they'll miss nothing. If it's an A advanced placement course, we'll have those running. Honors course, uh, those will run too. So, uh, you know, there'll there'll be no um, you know, uh, changes uh from virtual versus traditional.
Okay, Dr. Matrula, you're you're saying that the virtual and the cyber are pretty much interchangeable. I guess I'm kinda wondering, because I've heard virtual where the teachers teach and I've also heard a virtual option with a program, um, this edgenuity that I've heard of. That's what I'm I'm kind of wondering where that edgenuity program is coming in versus our virtual with our teachers actually teaching.
Dr. Futrick?
So the edgenuity uh platform is is just exactly that. It's a resource that teachers uh could elect to use. Um, and that's primarily it. It's not replacing any uh any course that they they have. As any high school teacher, if I'm taking eleventh grade chemistry, uh, you know, you're gonna get uh the Muhlenberg School District curriculum. However, if you wanna use the resource of edgenuity, you can certainly do that as a teacher. That'll be your option to to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbie.
Is there anybody else? April?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm April Frye. I have two kids, uh, one in third, one in fifth grade. Um, I have a question regarding if you would go full virtual. Um, it seems pretty excessive, I think, to have kids signed on from beginning to end of the school day. Um, especially considering that like during the school day, they have recess, they have lunch, they have specials. Is that being taken into account or are you still having something virtually to replicate that during the day?
You want me to answer that, Dr. Metrol?
Go ahead.
Uh, I could tell you, uh, you have two kids, one with uh Mr. Baylor and one with Mrs. Venza. Uh, both of those principals uh are are looking at trying to replicate the day as best possible. Uh, but I would be clear, I, what what I can tell you is they're not asking them to log on at at uh eight fifty and stay logged on for the entire day. Uh, there will be, you know, moments in the day where they will live on and be live with the teacher. There'll be moments in the day when they're in a small group setting, uh, and there'll be other moments in the day where they're doing an independent activity. Um, so it they will, the building principals and then the teachers will communicate that schedule out, but the expectation isn't isn't there for them to stay logged on for uh seven and a half hours a day. Um, the the teacher will put out a schedule for them and try to replicate a a regular school day because at some point we are gonna come back into school, uh, you know, and then we will have a schedule to follow. We we want them to be the same schedule that they would follow when they come in.
Um, I'm also like one of the other uh people that commented. I was furloughed from a job where I was working remotely from home, um, so I had to get work outside of the house. Um, I'm only here for a few hours, so I'm also concerned about, you know, not being here to assist especially my son in third grade. So do you have anything on the table to possibly like record, you know, the the what the teachers are doing so that way, if, you know, if they would need assistance from parents uh that we can help them and they could submit the work later? Um, is that something that you're considering or is that just completely off the table?
No, a- absolutely, we are considering that. Uh, this is going to uh challenge us to be as creative as possible. Uh, just like you heard the the other parent earlier mentioned, you know, she's two, her and her husband both work.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to be uh and and we're gonna have to differentiate our instruction as best we can. We're gonna have to be flexible. Uh, we're gonna have to meet the needs of our kids. Um, you know, because we want every kid to to, you know, grow uh throughout the school year. We, you know, we don't want any any relapsing of of, you know, your kid not progressing. So it's gonna challenge us to be creative. I could tell you our teachers will work with you. Our principals are going to have to think out of the box to address exactly what you're talking about. Uh, I'm confident they will be able to uh come up with some type of of remedy to to alleviate your concerns and, you know, the anxiety of your having. Um, but I, we will, we'll be very accommodating and try to meet everybody's needs.
Yeah, I I believe that. Well, like, we had no issues getting into contact with any of the teachers, you know, when everything was going on, starting in March. So, I mean, they were all, they made themselves available whenever we needed them. So I don't have any concerns with that end.
April, I'm sorry that you uh that you're going through this. Same with Katie. Uh, I'm, my my heart aches for you. I'm I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we've just gotta take it day by day right now.
Keep keep your face.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Inga.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I basically, Katie, the mom that spoke earlier, had asked my question. Um, I have double duty. I'm a teacher as well as a parent. Um, and I am concerned with how, as a teacher, having my hours eight fifteen to three forty-five, of course, we're willing to answer an occasional question. But I'm going to be busy schooling my kids at night. So I guess my concern is what are we gonna do for the parents who do work and need not just a quick question in the evening? Because when we did the virtual learning in the spring, teachers were on call almost all the time to help with tech issues, have Zoom meetings with kids. That's not gonna be an option under this plan. So I'm just kinda curious how we're gonna address those kids and and those parents.
Dr. Futrick?
Well, like I said earlier, it will challenge us to be very creative. Our our uh Mr. Baylor and Mrs. Venza at the elementary level uh do have some ideas. Uh, they will share that out with our staff of how of how we think they can do that. Um, and and to answer your question, I, you you know, you are in the position where, yes, you're a parent and you're a a a teacher. Um, so, you know, I I would look at the the teacher aspect of, you know, if we're in a traditional setting, uh, you know, how would you turn around and and help your kids? Uh, you know, in the evening. So we would, we would just have to be creative. I don't uh in in addressing that. And at this point in time, uh, it's gonna cha- cause us to think out of the box.
Yeah, I just think it's it's a little bit different in this situation because we have kids that are going to be in daycare all day long. Um, and my children included, they're going to be with someone who may not be able to log them in and do the traditional school day. So it's concerning to me, like, how are they going to interact with their teacher and, you know, having those evening hours for those kids so we can connect with them? I felt was very important for those families that didn't, weren't able to follow the traditional school day in a virtual setting a hundred percent. And as much as, you know, everybody's hoping that this is only gonna go a quarter, the potential is there that it could go longer. So those relationships are important. And during the school year, we're in person, obviously you have a phone call, you know, in the evening occasionally. But for this virtual stuff, there there could be families that need some extensive help.
A- absolutely. As you heard Mr. Nelson say, you know, earlier too, it's gonna cause us to really kind of uh try to be flexible um in in accommodating all of our our students' needs. So we will definitely do that. Um, and uh, once we, once we have that, I I could tell you your principals will communicate out how each building is going to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Inga.
Thank you.
Is there another, uh, Ian?
Yes, this is, can you hear me?
Yes, good.
Um, so I have, I'm Jason. I have two kids, one in middle school, one in high school. So, uh, just like the other two parents were saying about two working parents. Is it possible, since we have a tremendous amount of teachers, to split it up, one first shift and one second shift, like a traditional um workplace?
Uh, Jason, that, sir, I wish I could tell you, yes, uh, that would not be possible uh for all the things that we have already shared. Uh, you know, we actually thought of that. Um, we had some conversations uh earlier uh over the last month as to whether
Yes, I'm fine.
It would it would not be possible, given everyone's um own uh responsibilities. Uh, but I do appreciate you saying that. Uh, we we were thinking, what what else can we do? Uh, so I I wish that could be the case, but it can't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Um, hi, my name's Robin Bullis. I have a son who is going to fourth grade. Um, I have two questions, one for kind of either side of the decision. So in the event that they go back traditional, um, what is the lunchroom situation gonna look like? Because that is a large um group of kids that'll all be together. Um, and my second question is for the the hu- the virtual side of it. Um, and I know that this was touched on a little earlier, but just a little bit more clarification. Are devices, electronic devices going to be supplied? Is that something that the parents are gonna need to do? Um, are we going to, is it gonna be a, hey, if you have the ability to get your own device, do that? Um, what I, just a little clarification on those.
Sure, ma'am. Your your first thing here, I I'll briefly answer this. If Dr. Futrick, if there's something you wanna add in here. Uh, we we are a one-to-one district. The the district has invested uh millions of dollars over the past few years. It was a process. Uh, and uh, all you need to do is uh let us know if you don't have a device. Uh, one wasn't issued to you. I know uh uh our data administrator and our director of technology uh has a uh a a an operation set up uh for that to be uh to be dispersed. We did it in the in the spring uh with the devices that were uh sent out to the children. And uh, they still have those devices uh K through eleven. Uh, your, uh, ma'am, your second question was the cafeteria. I know uh Dr. Futrick has been working with the principals and they're making adjustments to the cafeteria periods uh uh to uh to um acknowledge safe distancing. Yeah, go ahead.
I could jump in, Dr. Matrol. I I know that Cole Principal Baylor uh has added additional lunch period and he's also spacing the kids out. Uh, and he's gonna use part of the gym as well um to to mitigate the social distancing in a traditional format. Uh, so I, he's, I I know Principal Baylor feels pretty confident that that he can handle that uh congestion at Cole during a lunch period.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanna say you guys are doing a great job. And I do understand that no matter what decision is made, not everybody's gonna be happy. And I do understand that no matter what decision is made, not everybody's gonna be happy. Um, so I appreciate everything that you're doing and that you're taking the time to listen to parents and get our input. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Is there anyone else? One more.
Hi.
Oh.
I don't, am I there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, okay. This is Katie Di Stefano, um, and I have four kiddos. Um, we have two that will be going to fifth grade. My boys and my girls would be starting a middle school this year. So big, big jump. Um, I do want to echo what so many of the other families have said. Um, we are so, as a family, so thankful for your care um, in the spring, um, and now, and actually just always, I'm Am I lost or am I still there?
No, you're still there, Mrs. Di Stefano.
Oh, okay, awesome. I'm sorry. I heard another, another sound. Um, but I, we are very proud to be a part of this district. Um, that being said, we will be a family that will have to choose a virtual model regardless, um, just based on some health concerns in one in our immediate household and then some in our extended family with our, with our parents. And so we want to make sure that we're able to care for them throughout this time as well. So given that, we were very pleased to hear about the push for synchronous instruction. Uh, meaning that the teachers that are so fabulous at Muhlenberg would be able to guide our students through the day, um, and give them that live instruction that I think surpasses any any curriculum model. I think the teachers are the key, right? Um, my concern is for the continuity of education within virtual platforms. So if a family opts into the virtual platform and say mid-year, the district decides to go back to in-person learning. And I know this is one of those weird projections and we don't know yet. Um, but can you describe the alternate virtual option and the level of support students would receive? Should we have to switch from being synchronously taught through the fifth and eighth grade teachers or fifth and, yeah, fifth and seventh grade teachers? Or then have to go to the online virtual model, which I'm assuming is not taught by those teachers because now they're teaching kids live. What would that transition look like for learners that have to stay virtual?
Uh, I'm gonna go to Dr. Futrick. He knows a, a lot of our curriculum, uh, a lot of conversations. What, what I will say to you is that, uh, we are, uh, looking at our staffing right now uh, here in our district and we know that we're gonna have to, uh, assign staff to the virtual, uh, program. Uh, so that's one thing that we know we need to do, uh, so that that continuity continues. Dr. Futrick, uh, for Mrs. Di Stefano.
So, uh, if, if you would elect to use the virtual platform, uh, at any point in time, uh, we do use a platform. It is edgenuity for a virtual program. Uh, just like Dr. Matrul has said though, is we will be assigning to begin the school year two staff members, uh, two Muhlenberg teachers to oversee that because we are expecting an increased enrollment in our virtual school. So you'll, you'll still have the ability to work with a Muhlenberg, uh, teacher who will be able to, uh, go back and forth between, I heard you say fifth grade and eighth grade. Is that right?
Um, yes, I, I've messed it up before, but I think that's where we are. Yeah.
So you'd be, that, the teacher that oversees the virtual program would, would at least be able to communicate with uh, middle school and, and cold teachers, uh, to kind of keep them in a loop. Because we do anticipate there will be more kids that want to enroll in our virtual school. And at some point in time, you may feel comfortable bringing them out of the virtual school and putting them in the traditional setting down the road. We want to make that transition as seamless as possible. Uh, so definitely something we're very aware of and, and, uh, and, and supportive of that it is seamless.
Okay, and Dr. Futrick and Dr. Dr. Matrul, is it? My understanding correct that when we do switch to, if, if it would be necessary for them to switch to the virtual model that is not virtual instruction provided by your staff. There will not be live, that would not be a synchronous program. That would be an asynchronous program that students would work through on their own and they have the option to ask for help from two Muhlenberg staff members.
Are you talking about a virtual, like if, if the third pathway is chosen and it's a full virtual model?
Third path, no, third pathway makes total sense to me, um, apart from the teachers being in the building, but that's not my decision. I just, but, um, that I, that I get. So that would be, their teacher would be following whatever the prescribed schedule is. My child would log in for math class at math time. They would log into ELA at ELA time. Um, if there's specials, they would log into a different link and attend those classes as well. So that I understand. It would be if Muhlenberg opts to go back to, like I'm trying to, to, to think about what, what is the most streamlined version for my kids? So if they go now back to the building and the option is, is A, I believe is option one. Um, but we're not able to do that for health reasons. What kind of support do they have? Will they have live instruction with?
In the virtual setting. They, they would, they would not have live instruction in that setting because we, our teachers would be teaching
Okay.
Traditional method, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Futrick. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Di Stefano.
Am I live?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi, this is Karen Althaus. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you again, like the others. Um, I don't envy the position that you're in, but I appreciate everything that you are doing for uh, the parents and the kids and everyone involved in this. Um, with that being said, um, two things I want to say. Um, one is, um, with multiple kids, we have three. Um, if they're all going to be online, doing Zoom, streaming, doing whatever at the same time, it's gonna put stress on any systems Wi-Fi that we have at home, let alone if you have a parent or two parents working from home. Um, and you need to make sure you have certain bandwidth and accommodations that way. So, um, if there's any advanced communication that the school district could put out in terms of like recommendations with um, uh, technology or bandwidth at home, that would be very much appreciated. And the other thing I just want to say, um, is I do have one child that has an IEP. Um, Dr. Rhett was a fantastic resource and he did a lot to put me at ease with, um, the concerns that I had. And I want to thank him publicly and encourage anyone else that if you do have those kind of questions, he was a fantastic resource. So thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Althaus. Hello, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jenny Neuheimer and I just have a couple of questions and maybe one concern. I have three kids in the district. They're going to be going into their junior, freshman and sixth grade years. Um, my husband and I both work. I actually work in the district as an assistant in a BB classroom. One of, both of my questions slash concerns pertain to virtual instruction. Um, obviously all kids learn differently. Mine are the same in that regard. One of my big questions is with following a synchronous schedule, what happens when there are no parents home? And say one of my or any child in the district fails to log on at the appropriate time? Um, how will attendance affect their grade? And alongside of that is, what is the concern or the reasonable expectation as far as limits for students to remain engaged online? Kids have various attention spans. They might easily get distracted, have to go use the restroom, get hungry, want a snack. Parents aren't home. How will teachers deal with students removing themselves from a Zoom session? And aside from that, my two oldest children are both on honors AP tracks. And I just really want some confirmation that their classes will follow a higher level learning coursework.
Dr. Futrick.
Yeah, so I'll, let me start with the AP one first. Uh, we, because it's an advanced placement course and that course is geared towards the AP test, we have to follow a nationally prescribed curriculum. There's no deviation on that. Uh, and so that's going to happen regardless of the thing we're in. Another question about attendance and, uh, logging in and out of Zoom. Uh, those are procedures that are, are building principles. We'll be outlining for our teachers of how that's gonna happen. I could tell you it is, it is something that, um, we're certainly anticipating our assistant principals are, are really, their role's gonna change in a virtual setting because they're gonna be reaching out to kids to make sure they're logged in. They'll be reaching out to parents, uh, but we will be staying on top of that because we want our kids to succeed. So the expectation is that they are gonna log in. We, I'm sure we're gonna have kids that, uh, you know, um, are gonna be a little bit harder to, to get to log in and, and participate. But that's our job to encourage that and we will rely on our staff to really, uh, push the envelope with that.
Okay, I, I do appreciate the feedback. Like I said, I work in the district, so I know that the kids are all over the place as far as home life, backgrounds, everything and just, I'm just concerned because like I said, I have three kids. I love them all equally, but two of my kids are super compliant and one of my kids honors classes, but he is not fond of school. And I'm super worried that with me not being in the home and my husband being out working, that he is just gonna take it like, well, there's no one here to enforce it. And I'm worried that even though he can excel at school and he is an excellent student when he puts his mind to it, that if it's not strictly enforced, that it's just gonna fall by the wayside and he's either gonna float by or he's gonna falter. And I'm the type of person, I think my, all my kids are the greatest thing since sliced bread. And I think every parent should, or maybe I should say the greatest thing since internet. And I think every parent regarding should feel that way about their kid. And I just want my kids to succeed. And if I have to, you know, give them a push, I will. But if I'm like here to give them that, a push, give them that push, I'm worried what's gonna happen grade-wise.
All, all your concerns Jenny, I, I couldn't agree more with you. Uh, they're all our concerns. You, with differentiated instruction, uh, kids, uh, all learn at different, uh, speeds and different capacities. Uh, and, and there's no, you know, one size fits all. Your concerns are, are, I could have a caring mother. Uh, and I, I completely respect that. We, uh, we know that, that there are complexities out there. Um, believe me, uh, when I say that to you and you're right. Uh, we are a very diverse, uh, school district and, um, uh, that's what makes us so beautiful. Uh, but there are so many things that we have to be concerned about. Uh, especially as a mom, uh, you know, you, we all know our kids. We all know, uh, what the strengths they have and, you know, what they can sidetrack on. And, uh, when you're sitting and you, you, you think about everything that we're going through, your concerns just will continue to grow and grow and grow and grow. And believe me, I, I, I grasp that. We all do here. Uh, we, we try to do everything we can to help you.
Dr. Matrul, if I could, Mrs. Neuheimer works for us in one of our, she's a power professional in one of our classrooms. Um, she brings, she brings that attitude that she just discussed about her kids to, to our kids as well. So, uh, thank you, Mrs. Neuheimer.
Hello?
Shelley Dorothy, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. My first question is about the Vo-Tec. Um, how do they plan on handling the, the part of the day that's the actual hands-on? I don't know very many of the classes out there that are not hands-on. Um, so how do they plan on keeping up with, with that part?
Well, I, I can at least say to you that, that they're handling that virtually. Uh, I scratched my head on the same thing. Uh, in fact, I had a meeting yesterday with one of our art teachers and, uh, and she's a phenomenal art teacher. Um, and I, I loved going into her classroom because, you know, the, the kids are proactive. She has all kinds of materials, some buttons and, and they come up with the most creative projects. And, you know, when you're virtually, yeah, how do you do that? And, uh, that was one of the questions I had at the Vo-Tec meeting is, uh, you know, how, how do you do that? That doesn't, it's like impossible. So the impossible is virtually that when it comes to the hand-on piece to it. He has a, a virtual component set up. That's, uh, Mr. Kahler. Uh, he's our new, um, CTC, uh, director, CTC principal. Uh, and, uh, you know, with our last meeting on Monday night, he made it pretty clear that they're set up virtually to do that. Uh, and just like everything else, uh, that's the, uh, that's the rub. I probably am, am very evident that, uh, you know, there's nothing like traditionalism. There, virtual learning, there is a place. There's no question about it. We are in a digital transformation, uh, as we, as we, uh, live today. That's affecting everything. Uh, but, uh, there are certain things that have to be done with the hands and with this pandemic, uh, they're gonna try to replicate it the best they can from a virtual side. And that's all I know regarding that. If you want to call Mr. Kahler over at the CTC, uh, he just came on board. I could tell you he'd be very gracious in trying to help you.
Okay, my other question quickly is, I may have missed this, but I heard for elementary school that it was going to be like the regular schedule. Uh, is that how it's going to be for high school as well? Like, are these kids signing on and pretty much with their different teachers throughout the entire day? Or is it gonna go back? Is it gonna be like it was at the end of the school year this past year?
It can't be like it was at the end of the school year this past year. Uh, Dr. Futrick?
Yes, it, it will certainly, uh, be like we explained, uh, we're gonna try to replicate the, the actual school day as much as possible. Try to make it as authentic as possible for our kids and, and, uh, give them the, a rich experience. Um, you know, in, in a virtual setting. Uh, but everything you're talking about, it, it, you know, nothing replicates the traditional setting. Absolutely nothing replicates that. So just like Dr. Matrul has said, I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know, uh, it's too bad, you know, bad, bad decisions that we have to, uh, live with here. Uh, but, um, we will do our best, uh, to try to replicate, uh, the classroom experience for, for our kids.
And, and I, I thank you for that. Um, you know, and I know I don't get a vote either. Um, you know, I wish it was just left up to the parents. Um, and because I also think about so many of those children that have disabilities that that's their only outlet. And they're not going to get anything. And I know you have plans for those children, but I'm talking about the disabled ones, the ones that are, you know, in a wheelchair that they need that every day to go to school. And my door is, thank God, you know, a, a healthy 10th grader. But, um, I work with kids and it, it is troublesome that, you know, so many are going to miss out on what they need every day. Just, just that release, just the food, breakfast, lunch.
Yeah.
Um, friends, you know, just everything. And it is sad and I appreciate that you guys are trying to protect everybody. But I just wish it would be left up to us parents, um, you know, and for the older kids. I know it's so much easier for the younger kids, um, as far as, um, I'm not saying that their workload is easy, but you know, when you get into middle school and high school, I was so disappointed at the end of the school year. You know, like everybody got handed As and I know that's not anybody's fault, but I, I'm just, I'm
I did, uh, what, what happened? I, you know, I just, um, President Hardy and just the, the rest of the board, I, uh, I want to make sure we, we hear everybody. Um, somebody has to make a decision here, decisions here, as much as parents want to make those decisions. As much as parents want to make those decisions, we're listening to people. We have to make them for you and be in line with the Department of Education on that. But we have so many lined up here. If if and then please, please do not be offended by me saying this to you. But I'm asked President Hardy, if he doesn't keep it two minutes, I don't know how we're going to get through all the the parents here or whoever wants to speak. And I do want to hear you and I know the board wants to hear you. But if we don't stay to those two minutes, we're gonna we're going to have some trouble here. Okay?
I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Becky?
Hi, my name is Becky. I have two kids in Muhlenberg, obviously. My youngest is in kindergarten, so my concern was how how would virtual learning be, I guess, put together for the kindergarteners? Those like my son, he didn't go to daycare or preschool or anything like that. So he has like no experience.
Becky? Doctor, Dr. Futrick?
Yes, I'll, you know, I heard some people say we didn't like what what we did last year in in the spring. But I will say one of the bright points of of what we did in the spring is I think our our elementary teachers did a marvelous job of of collaborating with each other and really trying to replicate in the classroom experience as much as possible in the virtual setting. I could tell you at the kindergarten level. Now, again, the reason why I think they did a little bit, they have 11 people in each grade that that they shared ideas, plans, strategies. And I think, you know, they they took it upon themselves of having, you know, one person develop the plans that they were able to really get pretty in depth in what they were doing. I I don't think you'll be disappointed with with what your your kindergartner is going to experience in a virtual setting. I think they certainly be challenged. But our kindergarten teachers, I could tell you, will make it fun as much as possible. Again, all things being relative, as much as possible to to at least start off their first year experiences as a as a school student.
Yeah.
Thank you.
April?
Hi, hi, this is April's husband, actually, David Kreiser.
Hi, Dave.
First off, say, say hi to Alan Futrick. I know him from the old neighborhood. I just wanted to say hi. I'm very proud of you. You've come through with your education system. Last time I saw you was Reading High School. But anyway. My big, my question is, we have three children, one is in sixth grade and two twin boys, both in first grade. One of the boys that we have, they're both special needs boys. They're they have autism and one of them is currently attending the Hogan Academy. And they have decided to do an in school or a virtual. We are giving us the option of which one we would like them to do. If we were to choose to have or one of our boys go to in school at Hogan Academy, is transportation still going to be provided in that respect? Technically, there's still Muhlenberg School District, so Muhlenberg was handling the transportation for them. And I was just wondering if something like that would still be provided or if that's just off the table at that point.
I can answer that, Dr. Metrola, if you'd like.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Hi, hi, Mr. Kreiser, how are you?
How are you doing, Dr. Metrola?
I'm doing well. Yes, we would continue to provide transportation for your son to Hogan.
Now, that was one of our big concerns with sending him is it's it's quite a haul for us to get him up and down there. Two ways to stay.
Yes, sir, we've already made those plans and I have been in contact with with Hogan in terms of your son, so.
I answered my question, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, just a quick question. I have two daughters, they're both in the RMCTC. I know they addressed a a brief bit of it earlier, but my concerns are their hours. So my understanding is that they have to hit a certain amount of classroom hours. My one daughter's in the early childhood education section and my other one's in the computerized drafting. So I understand they need to hit a certain amount of hours in order for them to qualify for certifications, which is the main goal of the CTC, to have them prepared to go out into the workforce. So how do you guys have any idea? I know you guys are really more focused on the Muhlenberg School District, but that's a big piece, you know, to both of my daughters, one being a senior and being a junior. So I just didn't know how it was going to affect them as far as are they going to be able to meet that criteria? Are they going to be able to still have the ability to have those certifications be available to them?
Right, right. Janice, my understanding, both Dr. Mumeen and myself, we serve as the superintendents of record. And of course, it's run now by Mr. Caller. My understanding at this time is that 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 everything is progressing as normal. Now, when I say that to you, I don't know if if this will jeopardize their certification process there with their hours. But my understanding is that it is set up to meet that that they that they do qualify for those certificates, given successful completion of the course. If something changes, you didn't tell me the truth. No, that's what my understanding is was and the same with Dr. Mumeen.
So I guess my question is, will there be clarification before the school year begins? Being that, I mean, my one daughter is a senior, so you know, I would almost feel resigned to keep her on track. But my other one's a junior in the early childhood education. I would almost feel inclined to to pull her and have her have traditional class settings if she's not going to really benefit or meet or or meet the criteria that she needs to to get the certifications. You know, are you following me?
I am. No, I completely understand you. I I would, I'm going to ask you that, and we make a note to reach out, reach out, have Eric Caller reach out to the to the parents here. If we can get your name here, I'll make sure that my secretary calls over and he looks at these programs and we get the information out. Because if you're asking me these questions, I'm sure all of our students that that we work with in the Reading School District are asking the same things.
We can't hear you, Maria.
Yes, I have a question. This question will be for Sean Rutt. I had spoken to him last week about my son transitioning from CDC to the Muhlenberg High School.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
And how is that going to work?
And I I do recall our conversation.
Ricardo Gonzalez?
Yeah, yeah, I know who we're talking about. I I don't want to discuss in public your your son. If you want to give me a call tomorrow, we can discuss where we are with that.
I just I just wanted to know if he was going to go virtual with Muhlenberg High School? Because CDC keeps calling me for the virtual as well.
Okay, it depends on what what our what our school board votes tonight. And then if if they decide that we are going to be in person, you and I will talk and we'll 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 get you through the rest of the process. So if you can give me a call tomorrow, we can talk about that, okay?
Okay, and his IEP won't be affected?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Brooks?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, there's a bad connection there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please, Whitney.
Hi, yes, I have two kids in the district. One is going to first grade and my daughter is starting middle school this year. And I just wanted to know if there is still going to be an orientation for the middle schoolers? Because we haven't really heard anything as far as teachers, classes. And, you know, whenever the time would be that they do go back to school, you know, they're not going to, I mean, they're not going to know their classes or where to even go if there's not like a formal orientation. Or I guess I'm just looking for clarification on your plans for how that goes for students going into a new school.
That will be taken care of here afterward, done this evening. The ball starts rolling tomorrow morning and the principals and the administrators will be getting information out to to our our parents in a timely manner.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead, Kristy.
Hi, my name is Kristy. I do have two children in the district. I just have a statement to make. I really don't have any questions, I just have concerns. I have a daughter who really didn't have a kindergarten thanks to this whole pandemic. And she's going into the first grade. I also have a daughter that's going into the third grade with a minor IEP. Mr. Maricola, when you say that you have to make this decision for us, I do take offense to that because I feel like while you may know something, I feel like parents are going to know better what their children need. And I know that my eight year old definitely needs to be with her student body. She needs that structure. So I just really, my husband and I work full time jobs. We can't, not one of us can stay home so that we can keep our children logged in. My child is at daycare eight hours a day. When I get home, I'm going to school as well. And I can't keep putting myself on hold, you know, because of something that we don't even know what's going to happen. And it doesn't even seem scientifically accurate. I mean, I just really, I'm praying that you guys are really looking at this in a situational basis of how this is really going to react for our children. Because it's not us that is going to pay this price, it is our children. And to know that my child, who is going in the first grade, barely even got a start to her education, that it's going to be, you know, put into this mess, I I just, I just, I'm just praying that you guys are really looking at these children and seeing what they really need and what they deserve and that they should be in class with their students.
I I just have to say, please, don't be offended. I'm not making the decision for you. I have to submit the decision and we have to look at the options. And you you sound like the way I feel. I don't want that. I want our kids in school, but we also know what has been laid at our doorsteps with the pandemic. As far as your daughter is concerned and all your kids, I understand that. And that's what I spoke about earlier, about our democracy and this domino effect of kids not getting what they should be getting. And I can't agree with you more. Please, I I I said to you earlier, I said to everybody, not everybody's going to be happy. But please don't take offense to the fact that I said I. I'm I'm the the CEO of the district and we just simply have to submit the paperwork and 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 make recommendations. I'm not making the the assertion that I that I'm making. Or do I understand everybody's complexities in their homes? I certainly do understand that, ma'am. It's very hard, it's very difficult. And what you feel so bad about with your daughter, we do too. And so I said, I'm a traditionalist. Nobody wants their kids in the classroom with a teacher is more than me. I I don't know how we're going to get everything back that happened from this point on. And we're not alone in this. It's 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 across the state and across the country. So I hope you accept what I what I just shared with you, ma'am.
I do, I do, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. relieve Alaska, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I have I have a few questions. One thing, Garrett Heineman, you were my principal at 13th and Green. And I'm so excited to see you. My aunt was your secretary, it was Aunt Louie.
Oh, my gosh, Mrs. Fry was my secretary for 19 years at 13th and Green. And I could not have run the building without her.
Yes, she was amazing. I just needed to say that. My my main question is, has asynchronous learning been completely ruled out? Because I think that would be very beneficial to a lot of parents who work.
It hasn't been completely rolled out. We it has to be fit into this synchronous schedule of the five days per week. But we we know that there is something there to be said about that. Dr. Futrick?
No, it hasn't been ruled out. You know, we're we're depending on what the board decides tonight. That that was actually part of the of the plan of trying to replicate the the authentic experience. And like I said, it's going to challenge us to be creative. So we may have to record some, we may have to be live. I think it's really going to be dependent on what our what our students need.
Okay, thank you for that. I have a first grader and a fifth grader. I can't say enough about the teachers that they both had last year. While it was trying for me to be a teacher here at home, I was lucky enough to be able to work from home and have, you know, extra time in between, you know, like a lunch break and things like that, to be able to help the kids do some assignments during the day. If it's synchronized, I don't know how I'll manage that. I have two elderly parents who are more than willing to help me with my kids. However, neither of them know how to use a Chromebook or an iPad very well to follow instruction. I do have the option to work from home, but I work nine to five. So I don't know how the elementary or CE call schedules would be able to fit into that. And so that's very concerning for me.
I understand. No, I understand. And and these are all the things that, you know, we've we've weighed out, we've heard. It's just that there's not one decision that can be made here that's going to work things equally. Like I said, if someone's not going to be happy how things set in, I feel very bad for your situation. It's a, as I have everyone here so far. And those that have called earlier this week, you know, I'm going to have to quit my job. You know, it's it's just, it's a god awful situation to be in. And and, you know, keep everybody safe. Anyway, as an earlier parent, you know, I'm going to make you get some clarity there. I just hope we're, I know COVID-19 is real. We had a nurse come on here, she's seen the first effects of this. And then you stop and you think, you know, things all of a sudden subside in November and then we're all fooled. But I do know COVID-19 is real. And what it's done is is posed just unbelievable and unbearable stress and burdens on all of you and especially our schools. We'll try to help you out as much as we can, ma'am. You seem like a really good person. And if Garrett Heineman is your principal, then you ought to be pretty smart.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I had a question. My daughter's a type one diabetic and she attends the Muhlenberg Middle School. She'll be going to the ninth grade this year. I wanted to know if they do end up doing the virtual through the school. So there, if my understanding is correct, they will have the structure with the teachers throughout the whole the whole day like the normal class time? Or is it best to do the Muhlenberg virtual school? Or is it best to do the Muhlenberg Virtual School? Because I do plan to do the Muhlenberg Virtual School if yous don't decide to go virtual. So I'm wondering if it's gonna be the same classes like she would have that she picked for this year?
Yeah, Tracy, I, the answer that Dr. Futri can answer, but I will say to you that we will try to replicate those classes the closest we can and with flexibility. Your daughter with diabetes type one, Tracy, I know you know me, you got to really keep an eye on. Kathy Bauer is phenomenal. We hired another nurse, got a nurse in every building this year, which is gonna help out. If you choose the virtual school, she is going to be home. And if we, the virtual, five days a week, she's still gonna be home. If there's anything that, you know, that you need, I know our nurses will go out of the way for you. You really gotta keep an eye on the type one. There's flexibility.
Yeah, the only reason why we're choosing the virtual, she's afraid to go back to school. Plus, I do work in the healthcare field, so I have seen the COVID myself. So she really hasn't been, she really hasn't been out of the house since March. Maybe I just started to take her to a grocery store and, but she's fearful. So I know that virtual is what we're gonna do. I'm just waiting for yous guys' decision. Because I don't want to go Muhlenberg Virtual School. If yous are actually gonna go virtual, then she could actually have her own teachers and her classes. So I'd like to thank yous for everything that yous are doing. And I wanted to let you know you do have my support. This is not an easy thing.
Thank you, Tracy. Take care of your daughter. Good mom.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Beth.
Hi, I have two students in Muhlenberg. One is in her last year and the other is going to eighth grade. Now, my daughter, who's gonna graduate at the end of this year, is great with her classes. But my son, Raven Scrocky, is just bad at attending online. He needs structure. So when you say to me that school virtually will be on a schedule, I like that because he needs that structure. And I really do, I have to say, I appreciate everything that you guys are going through and all the decisions you must make. I'm prepared to do whatever I have to do for my son to make sure that he can continue to grow and learn. My question is...
You there, Beth?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. My question is, what happens if my son just doesn't connect? I do think that if his teachers are in the classroom and he can see them teaching in a traditional manner, he will grow and learn. But based on what happens, and I know it was chaos, at the end of the year, I'm afraid he's gonna fall down.
Hang with us here. And I'm hoping when this decision is made here in that traditional synchronous format, that it does help you and provide you with some kind of structure for your son as it's set up with some moderation with flexibility. If there is any concern that you have, I would just reach out to the, the eighth grader would be Principal Ebert. I would reach out to Principal Ebert and I know he's very proactive and we will get on this and with the counselors and try to work things with you that your son gets the kind of attention he needs. And it's not honey dripping from my lips because I gotta tell you something. I know we're gonna have a lot of problems with this. I know it. And I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. It wouldn't matter what we do. There's gonna be a load of issues. One of, the two of them are much worse than the virtual one. And even this isn't what I'd like to see. No one wants to see this. But it's what we're left with. And I know we're gonna have some issues right out of the starting gate. My concern is someone, just like you explained, and the same thing with the parent earlier, you know, with the child that has disabilities. And there could be some other healthcare considerations there that we don't even know about. And I have to take it for what it is here when we're conversing. So we will reach out. I know Dr. Futri, we have the mindset here, humanity first. And believe me, we've got a lot of people that say things and do things. And I know how easy it is when you're communicating someone to take offense to something. You don't even mean it that way. I can tell you right out of the starting gate, we're gonna have some issues here. But we've got a wonderful staff, a wonderful faculty. And if everybody just kinda cooperates and just, we can do the best we can for you. My heart aches because I know, I know there's just so many people with different circumstances that it's just not gonna fit into that. And then we have some people that think it's great. But that particular part of it, given the scenario that we have, I think we can reach out and help you. And Dr. Futri, we all have a can-do attitude. Dr. Rutt, I don't wanna leave anybody up, but we will do what we can to help you. And our teachers will do the same.
Yes, hi. I arrived a little, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Brett.
Hi, everyone. I arrived a little late and this may have been addressed. I have four kids that currently attend. And I have another that would be starting her first year in kindergarten this year.
Thank you.
The, I mean, it's a large family. And when this all happened, it was made a little easier because my mother works at the Reading School District. She has for over 20 years. She wasn't working, so she was able to come over and help because both the parents are full-time, you know, employees to, you know, maintain our, you know, our home and everything for the kids.
Sure.
Now, she is looking to go back to work. So it's leaving us in a position where we don't know what to do. And the bigger question is with a kindergartner that's gonna start her first year of school and hasn't had any prior school to do that, how can we go into that with somebody who's had no schooling? You know, that's my biggest concern is her, because she's not been anywhere. And I'm not a teacher. And it was a struggle for me, you know, with four other kids. How is a brand-new student gonna be able to be comfortable and involved and not struggle to learn?
Yeah, boy, I tell you what, you know what, it's like, my Lord, there's a youngster just entering school. If there's anyone that needs the kind of compassion and embracement, it's that little girl. And look at all the other kids that are out there, but I'm speaking to you within the same situation. That is just not what I would wanna see in any circumstance whatsoever. Given what we're looking at here, and it can't. Nothing is going to replicate embracing and showing the kind of love and care for a little child that age. Any of our kids at any age, but my God, coming out of the starting gate, this is make or break it. And it's so important that kids get that strong, fundamental, caring, compassionate start to school. Let me be really frank with you. There's nothing, nothing on that table that would actually do what is proper for your daughter. I'm sorry. Now, that being said, I can tell you that we will have our kindergarten teacher and that the building principal reach out and try to help you the best we can. There is not an appropriate answer to that, to say, well, that's the right thing to do. There's no way. In fact, I'm so upset just that particular scenario. Because I know how wrong that is, that if she doesn't get the kind of compassion and one-to-one instruction in a safe environment, in a safe environment. I know Reading will be going virtual the first marking period. I don't wanna talk about your personal life here. I want you to thank your mom for her service in terms of working with our kids in the city of Reading. If they're going virtual, I don't know if that helps you out with that part in your house. I don't wanna even try to put myself in your shoes. And being a father of a large family, four, not five, and a Dr. Futri has five, I know what that is like. I know what that's been like for years. My kids are older now, but I still have one in high school, public high school. And I'm worried about her, just as you are with your kids. I'm not at a loss for words. There is no right answer that anybody can say to you other than the kind of compassion that would be felt by someone literally embracing your daughter. And now you stop and you think, and believe me, at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, I'm walking around and I'm thinking of these things, how do you address it? How do you fix that? And that is not, there's nothing that can answer that other than that particular interaction. And nothing better than somebody that cares about you.
Those first couple, those first couple of years are very key. And I've seen that with all my kids. And thankfully, they've had great teachers with great interaction. And it just, I'm worried what could happen with her. And I know you guys have terrible decisions to make. And it's not easy. I work in retail. So I see this like all the time, you know, my girlfriend does as well. So we're interacting with people and we're face masked constantly, you know? And it's a risk going to work, you know? So I understand that these decisions are difficult to make. I'm just, I'm unsure as to, because if I don't have that extra crutch of my mother, I don't know what we're going to do going into a new school year with all of the kids if they are at home. You know, having two working parents. And it's very difficult. And it's so hard to know what we're gonna be able to do now.
Have you, yeah, this is so personal. I hate, I hate to hang, did you talk to your mom? Okay, sure. Okay, I, you had, God bless you. Reach out. Can somebody, put me back on there? All right. I know. I want somebody to reach out to this gentleman. Dr. Futri, can you make sure someone reaches out to that man right there? I mean, all of our parents, that one right, God bless him.
Yes, if Dan can get his number, I'll ask Mrs. Venza, since he has an incoming kindergartner.
That's the worst thing I can hear. I've heard nothing but that. That, that. Okay.
Hello?
God bless you. Hi, Jason.
Go ahead, Jason.
Dr. Maggiavell?
Yes, sir.
I do have one question about the online and the off-site learning for children.
Okay, sir.
The one thing that has not been addressed through this whole meeting is web and internet security. So with our new, everything going over to webinar and secure training for schools, what is, is our protection as logging in and receiving files for from the school?
Okay.
And from teachers, teachers logging in on their own personal computers? And basically the fact of malware? Has that been addressed?
Sir, the teachers have devices that are from the Muhlenberg School District. They do not log on with their own devices to teach. I know that we have a security laws that are part of our infrastructure here. I know our Director of Technology does keep up with that. In terms of getting onto sites that are not permissible or dangerous, you're not able to do that on district hardware because they're programmed not to go there. If there's a site that's deemed dangerous, that is blocked. And I know that our Director of Technology investigates that consistently. And of course, we know there are people out there that spend a lot of time consistently trying to break that. But to this point, I'm not aware of any issues. I'm not aware of any issues of someone getting beyond the wall where there is a security breach. Dr. Futri, have you ever heard of anyone being able to, any security issues with our computers? We can check with Dan Health too, but no one has ever mentioned anything to me.
No. Basically, my question is, how far have, has this been researched and looked into? Because malware is easy. I've seen companies get crippled from malware. How do we protect ourselves from now our children are logging in to do schoolwork? How do we protect ourselves from files being transferred or anything like that? Just because it's an app, even this Teams app, malware can be transferred.
I'm asking our Director of Technology to, Dan?
Yeah, all our devices that are district-distributed have an antivirus and endpoint protection on them that are Windows-based. And all our other devices are managed by either Google or Apple. And we limit what can be installed on them. So I feel very confident that we are not distributing or getting distributed on our devices, things that should not be on.
But you're talking about if that's devices distributed to children. If we would go fully virtual and you're saying children can log in from home, shouldn't they be logging through a VPN or something secure instead of just logging into a network? And receiving files and sending files?
I guess I'm a little confused as to what you're asking when it comes to the VPN. The VPN only helps if you wanna have everything totally encrypted. I guess I'm trying to get at what you're asking. Are you saying that if a teacher puts a file out in their Google Classroom, you want them to VPN into that Google Classroom?
Or is that, is that file that they put out in their classroom already scanned for us to download at home?
It should have already been scanned.
How?
As I said, we have virus protection on our machines. So the virus protection on the machine would do the scanning of the document.
But if the teacher's at home logging in and doing the same thing that I'm doing now, how will that help? Is there any protection for the people that are at home that are not? Is there any protection for the people that are home that are not getting school issued devices? To be protected from getting malware and all their personal information being transferred out?
Well, if you're asking.
I know the repercussions of it.
Oh, I understand it myself very, and I do a whole course on it here with our staff. But I can't, if you're asking me, can I guarantee? That somebody won't ins- uh, send something from their personal machine? I, I can't control people's personal machines no lo- more than I can control your personal machine. Uh, that gets into some very iffy uh, legal issues, I think. If you're telling me that you want me to control everybody's machine personally, students and faculty and parents.
No, the only reason I mentioned it was because it's something to think about because you can't control all of that. Now you have all of these students logging in from their personal computers.
Well, that's why we're providing them with devices so they don't have to do that.
Okay. But what about the other students that aren't provided with those that we were saying?
We are gonna be distributing devices again like we did in the spring. So every single student will have the opportunity to get a district device.
Now, the next question is how often is that device updated with the recent malware attacks?
Well, with regard to, I, I'm gonna end it with this. With regard to Chromebooks and iOS, they are continuously updated with the, with the latest version. As it comes out.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have additional? As it, what'd you say, Brandon?
Brandon.
Hi, Brandon.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, first off, I appreciate everybody's time tonight. I know we're a long ways away from the slides that we looked at earlier. Um. The, I guess the question I had was. As far as the students that are going to be impacted by going virtual, uh, not having a traditional setting. Has there been any data analytics to quantify how many students are going to be impacted by that?
You know, that's a great question, a, a great research question. Uh, and you said data to quantify how students are affected by that?
Uh, more specifically, how many students or how many families? I, uh, the reason I asked the question is. To, to your point earlier, um, to, to your point earlier, it, it just seems to be that. As a society, we're, we're looking at this more out of an emotional perspective, out of fear, if you will. So I'm just curious if we've looked at the data to see how many students are going to be impacted if we go virtual. Their families and them who won't have the resources or potentially people to monitor them and make sure that they're able to get the education.
Yeah, you know, the, when, when they, uh, as far as our district is concerned. Uh, at Brandon, eh, when, when there was a survey that was sent out, uh, and it was, there was really no truly uh, significant difference. Um, uh, it was a forty, thirty, thirty split. Uh, and that clearly told us that it, you know, we know that it wouldn't matter what's decided. Somebody's not gonna like this. Um, and I, I'm, I'm, my, my research portion of me is, is popping in here. Cause when you say that, um, and, and then I think of myself, you have your personal feelings about. Uh, uh, how this is going to have an impact on people if we go one way or another. If you're looking at it from an educational standpoint, yeah, there are people out there that, that outright believe that this is, uh, this is where education is going. I'm scared to death about that, to tell you the truth. Uh, and I shared a statistic here uh, this morning, uh, might have been yesterday morning. Uh, you know, for, in, in the last eighteen years, fifty-two percent of Fortune 500 companies are no longer there. Fifty-two percent of the Fortune 500 companies that were up, uh, uh, evident like the Kodak and the Westinghouses. They're not there anymore because we're going through this digital transformation and it's reshaping, reforming everything. And my fear is that it is that, that if this is going to continue. We're going to have a divide in this country that we're not going to ever get back, uh, back towards. That's the big, that's the big global piece to it. We're going to be hurting. The other side of it is, sure, there are kids that, that can learn virtually. Uh, a lot of colleges are, uh, do that asynchronously. Um, um, I mean, but in terms of, of synchronous education, uh, there's nothing that I think is more important than that, than that traditional interaction. Of course, you get that interaction uh, from asynchronous, uh, one time, two times, and then they go, go off and run it. Some people learn very well like that. Uh, when I listen to some of the other parents that have called in here today, I gotta tell you. My, 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 my heart is aching here. This is uh, uh, almost an impossible solution. One bad thing after another, but it's, it's, yeah. Where, where are we going to go with this? And like one, hey, after one marking period, it could go longer. I hope not. I can tell you that. I hope not. My concern is, is, is for our kids and there's nothing like uh, that kind of interaction. But we are moving and I see it. You see it i- in, in everything that we do. You see it in business. You see it in industry. Uh, we can't, we can't sacrifice the human soul uh, here, uh, because, you know, that works. And I will be first to tell you, there are kids out there that truly do well virtually and they excel virtually. But it's not for everyone and not for the masses when it comes to the development of, of, of the mind and physically, uh, with, and, and emotionally. Uh, so as far as all of that portion of that research piece. Uh, it, it, it kind of interconnects with that, that split that you have here. And most of it has been uh, understanding the emotional side of it. Uh, you know, a parent at home there, I, I'm gonna have to quit my job. Um, uh, so my, my position's going to be, we have to do this. Then we have someone uh, that, that called me the other day, hey, my kid does great on, on the computer. I want him on the computer. Okay, I, I understand that. And, and he would be on the computer if we were sitting in the classroom. Okay, I understand that too. Um, so it, it's, you, you, you asked a great question. I, I, uh.
If you don't mind me like, uh, just kind of circling back. The, the reason that I asked that question too is, you know, I'm not, I know I'm not on the board, right? I'm not making this decision, but I, you know, I do have a son that goes to Muhlenberg. And the reason I asked specifically about quantifying it is you can say with certainty, because we've had a significant amount of parents speak out tonight. That their students and their lives will be significantly impacted by the decision to go virtual and not have them that. Give them the opportunity to essentially have their kids at school with that structure. Um, I feel like this meeting kind of fell short on delivering if we can't say how many individuals that is. Because if you make that decision, you are going to say with certainty, this is how many students we're going to impact. And this is what the impact looks like. It seems to me like that portion of it has, has somewhat been avoided tonight. But we have gone with the comfortable piece saying, you know, erring on the side of, we know what the fear is. So I kind of, I don't necessarily side with anybody because I understand you guys have a tough decision to make. But uh, there's very real quantifiable uh, consequences that are going to happen for a bunch of families. And I don't feel like there's been enough analytics there or evidence shown to show what the impact's going to be. But the, the potential to do that or measure it was there. So the opportunity was there.
Well, let me say this to you. Uh, we know that there's going to be serious branding, serious impact. We, we know that. Uh, there's not one decision that's going to be made that, that's going to be the right decision. Uh, as, as far as quantifying it, uh, we, we've been pulling in data from, from, from across this state. From at least from other districts, from what they're experiencing, but we know here in our district. We, we know from, from uh, eh, eh, not as much as a, a, a quantifying element, but a crawling, uh, a qualifier. That it's going to have a massive impact on everybody. Any one of those will have a massive impact on everybody. Uh, we're not falling short of it and we're not dismissing it. Uh, we know that, uh, that, that, that there's also a matrix out there. And we also know we have an obligation, as I said, safety is our number one concern. Uh, uh, there, there's no one that wants to see the kids sitting in there uh, with the, with the teachers more than I do. Uh, but I do, I, I do, I, I appreciate and uh, uh, I want to thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Hello? So this is, this isn't Rob Yarenko, this is Jess Yarenko, his wife. Um, I just want to say, um, you know, I know you guys are dealing with a really tough situation. This is an unprecedented circumstance and of course, nobody wants kids to suffer from going virtual. Um, I, I feel that, you know, just from my experience working in schools. I can't imagine at this timeframe that it's safe for kids to go back. That for a thousand kids to be under one roof, just doesn't make any sense based on what uh, the CDC is recommending. That being said, I, you know, like, listening to the parents, I was just curious if there was anything. Being set up in terms for support for them. Um, I had the opportunity to participate in the National Autism Conference last week. And the one big takeaway that I got from.
You still there? I think, I think we lost the connection there.
Are you still there?
Writing some support to parents to learn how to adapt and develop those skills that they may have never, you know, they haven't done before. So I was just wondering if there was going to be any kind of support or anything in place to help parents. Uh, learn how to engage their kids. And they were saying, and the big takeaway was that this ultimately might end up being a good thing. You know, for parents to learn if they do develop those skills long term.
Yeah. Um. Dr. Futri, if you want to touch that one piece, I just went out. And I don't know if she was talking about help from uh, from a mental health standpoint. I can tell you Zach Milch i- is, is working uh, with some, a couple of outside agencies, agencies to help our parents. Uh, cope with this and, and, and assimilate to the um, pressures at home with the technology. I, I didn't hear about fifteen seconds of your, your question. Um, but I, I think if you're asking, uh, are we looking at how we can help our parents with technology? Uh, I think that's a great suggestion. And uh, uh, Dr. Futri, uh, uh, any comments on that?
Yeah, actually, uh, uh, just last year, we hired a parent outreach coordinator. Uh, Liz Laviana uh, works with our parents uh, all, all the time and is always uh. Uh, looking to provide assistance, to provide any kind of guidance and open any doors for uh, our parents. Um, are building principles, certainly are, are, uh, you know, have an open door policy and you can reach out to them. But uh, yes, we're, we're always looking to educate uh, our, our parents about the, the benefits of schooling. And, and the things that we can, we can do to, to work better as a partnership.
Do you have, I, I just was curious if like, you know, like something like the gentleman who was speaking about his daughter going to kindergarten. If like you would have something available for like an orientation for those kindergarten parents. So that, you know, it, it seems like maybe overly, you know, common sense or simplistic. But just how to set up a routine, how to have the schedule, uh, you know, like placement and organization, those type things that. You know, like I think when you work in education, you take for granted that people will, that's something that comes easily. But for parents who are not, you know, used to that type structure, I just think it would be helpful. If there was something put in place universally, not that that's a parent has to reach out. But like, you know, if there was like a seminar or something available to parents so that they could, you know, you know. Maybe work through some of their fears and some of their concerns as far as the virtual learning.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion, Jess. Dr. Futri, I think that's a wonderful suggestion.
I agree. I, I think that's something that we could certainly do to uh, build a bridge and uh, continue to, to provide any kind of help we can.
Yeah, thanks, Jess.
Yep, thank you. Yep, go ahead, Brooke.
Brooke?
You there, Brooke? Okay. Uh, moving right along here. Now we will move on to uh, personnel. Dr. Matravella.
All right, thank you, uh, uh, President Hardy. Uh, under five oh one, the board's going to be asked to approve the listed resignations. Under five oh two, board's going to be asked to approve the list of professional appointments as, as listed for you. Under five oh three, the board's going to be asked to approve classified appointments. Under section five oh four, the board's going to be asked to approve mentor assignments. And five oh five, special education technology facilitator for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Board's going to be asked to approve uh, salaries for professional staff. Uh, updated in exhibit A four, and I'm just, uh, maybe a solicitor bowling. Uh, uh, I, I know, I know you're still there. I don't know if, uh, we, we might have a couple of board members that need to abstain. Uh, I just would need your professional advice on that, uh, because they are professional staff salaries.
Yes, if, if it was a, a family member, yes.
Okay, uh, and I think they know who they are. Uh, so thank you, Solicitor. Board's going to be asked to approve uh, the Air Force Junior ROTC instructor salary for the twenty twenty one school year. Board's going to be asked to approve in section five point zero eight, professional employee contracts for tenured teachers. They're listed. Uh, when we do come back to a traditional model here, we're going to get these approved now. We have bus monitors for section five oh, five oh nine. Board's going to be asked to approve uh, health service, services for the twenty twenty, twenty one school year as listed. Uh, board's going to be asked to approve grade level leaders in exhibit A seven. Uh, department chairpersons in section five point one two for the twenty twenty one school year. Board's going to be asked to approve in section five point one three, substitute pay rates. Board's going to be asked to approve substitutes for the, for the twenty twenty one school year. And in section five point one five, guest teachers for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. In section five point one six, board's going to have, we're going to be asked to approve the following employees for summer hours. You can review that in exhibit A eleven. Uh, and the board's going to be asked to approve uh, section five point one seven, BCIU bus drivers and aides. For the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Board's going to be asked to approve the pay rate for Laureldale crossing guards for the twenty twenty one school year. And section five point one nine, co-curricular resignation. Uh, she's now our uh. Elementary school assistant principal, section five point two oh, fall twenty twenty coaching assignments. Five point two one, board's going to be asked to approve summer workout compensation for trainers. In section five point two two, board's going to be asked to approve. Co-curricular assignments. Section six, we're going to strike that? Okay, strike section, strike item five point two two, President Hardy, rest of the board, strike. Item five point two two.
Okay.
Okay, and item number six in management, board's going to be asked to approve the annual men- uh, membership for the Brooks Business Education Coalition. Section six point zero two, representatives for the Berks County Schools Health Trust Consortium. Board's going to be asked to, uh, you're gonna have to have some discussion here on voting delegates. For the twenty twenty PSBA Delegate Assembly. So this is a resolution uh, for two of our board members to be voting delegates. So uh, President Hardy, do you want to uh, entertain a conversation with the? So, uh, President Hardy, do you want to, uh, entertain a conversation with the, uh, nine board members as to who would want to be a voting delegate for the 2020 PSBA Delegate Assembly?
Okay.
If any, any event, nobody wants to do it, uh, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Otto. Would there be anybody else that would want to do it?
I would do it too.
Okay, there you go, Rick.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hoffmaster, thank you, Mr. Boyd, thank you. Uh, we're going to go to item, uh, there's no items at this time under physical plant transportation. Uh, board is going to be asked in section eight, uh, to approve the financial reports. Section 8.02 certification of unpaid interim change tax bill for the calendar year 2019. Board is going to be asked in section 8.03 to approve the disposal of surplus property. In section 8. Point 04, the board is going to be asked to approve exhibit D4, the Employee Assistance Program Services Agreement. Any questions, any comments, any heartburn? Other, item nine. Board is going to be asked to approve the Millenburg School District Phase Reopening Health and Safety Plan for the 2020, 2021 school year that will be submitted. Board is going to be asked to approve the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration in exhibit E4. Board is going to be asked to also approve another item to go into the state approving the Millenburg School District Emergency Instructional Time Template for the 2020, 2021 school year. In section 9.04, board is going to be asked to approve, uh, a following board policy, a school year, uh, a non-resident student. And falls under our policy guidelines, he'd be a senior. Uh, board is going to be asked to approve in section 9.05, a services access and management, a linkage letter. Uh, we don't have any student activities here this evening, obviously, and then in section 11.01, board is going to be asked to approve, uh, minutes. And section 13.01 under new business, I just want to take a moment because this has been, uh, accepted uh, by all of the 18 school districts, uh, in the, uh, Berks County. Uh, and, uh, will line up with, um, uh, equity and anti-racism. Policies that are now emerging, uh, from Harrisburg. Board is going to be asked to approve this anti-racism and equity statement. It's very brief, briefly, uh, very briefly. Uh, recent events, protests and discussions around racial injustice throughout our country have sparked increased and urgent dialogue among community leaders to fight racism and address pressing issues of social injustices. The education community is no different. The 18 Berks County School Districts, the two career and technology centers and the Berks County Intermediate Unit are committed to providing safe and inclusive learning and working environments where racism is not tolerated and equity is the standard for your more, for the more than 70,000 students here in Berks County. Their families and our teachers and staff. Collectively, we share concern over how systemic racism and social injustices are impacting our Berks County Schools and Community. As education leaders, we are obligated to have productive conversations around those inequities and the work that needs to be done to address them. Furthermore, we are committed to deep, sometimes difficult reflection on our own routine practices and assumptions that might otherwise go unexamined. So, um, I'm going to ask the, the board, uh, to approve, uh, the Berks County Anti-Racism and Equity Statement and join our other brothers and sisters in terms of, um, uh, districts and, uh, uh, to approve this, uh, equity statement. Any questions? Any comments?
Yeah, can I make a, can I make a statement? This is Otto.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me, let me. Okay, I, I feel, okay, while all of us. But basically the statement is putting, uh, and a bad use of term, but, uh, is putting, uh, a gun to our head and saying, okay, if you don't vote for this, okay, you're racist. Or if you don't vote for this, then you're this, that and the other thing. Okay, I don't believe, okay, uh, that there is systemic, systemic racism in our school. Okay, period. We treat everybody, okay, the same. We teach, uh, we, uh, reach out to everybody with respect. Everybody with the same opportunity. Everybody, including myself, needs to get better every single day, uh, with, with our relationship, uh, with our fellow man. And it says, and, and so by voting yes, it says, oh, uh, there is systemic racism. And I don't believe that. Uh, and so I'm going to abstain from the vote because if I vote no, then everybody's going to call you a racist. Uh, or, uh, well, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to pass the, uh, meeting back over to you, Mr. Hardy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dr. Matrula. Uh, we will move on to, uh, hearing of visitors. Seeing there are none, okay, we'll move on to the, uh, MSDRM CTC Board Visitor of the Month, check the schedule, see who you are. Moving on to, uh, the board meetings and calendar events. And moving on to adjourned meeting. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, second. Okay, thank you. All of the favor.
Aye.
I'd have it, okay. Meeting is adjourned, moving on to the regular board meeting for Wednesday, August 12th. Roll call please.
First, here. Hardy.
Here.
Hoffmaster.
Here.
Heineman.
Here.
Lapia.
Here.
Madera.
Here.
Mangle.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Here.
Here.
Hey, thank you. We did the pledge of allegiance, moving on to educational presentations, Dr. Matrula.
Okay, Mr. Patterson, do you have anything additional you want to share on the physical plan update? Okay. Yes. No, I'm going to do it now.
Second meeting of policies.
I'm going to do that here in a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. I apologize. I apologize. You know, somebody sent me a, a, a note the other day, said, you know, try to find some humor in all of this and I said, I'm trying. Uh, and I just found a little humor here. I needed to turn the page and thank you for the help there. Um, I appreciate that. Okay. Um, I think we're on committee reports, uh, Mr. Hardy.
Okay, then, thank you.
And thank you.
Moving on to, uh, hearing of visitors. For anyone who would like to make a statement. Yes, we don't have any, okay, thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports. Berks County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Randall Madera.
Yes, there was no meeting in July and the regular meeting is scheduled for next Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Reading Millenburg CTC, Mrs. Sandy Mingle.
Uh, yes, um, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, the CTC is going virtual with the teachers being in the, in the classrooms. Um, so we will update accordingly as we find things out.
Okay, thank you. Berks County Tax Collection Committee, Mr. Shane Mathias.
Good evening, everyone. Um, there, there actually was a tax collection committee meeting, uh, for the first time in a long time, we had a Zoom meeting on July 30th. Uh, I don't have a lot to report, but just real quickly, uh, two things I want to update the board that I, I did share. The first thing is an update on the new tax collection system software, uh, which has been an ongoing, uh, process for some time. The new vendor, things seem to be working out pretty well with the new vendor and they are anticipating completion and a rollout of the new system, uh, December of this year. So that, that's along the way to good news. And the second thing is, uh, that Herb Bunting Company, uh, was there to report, uh, was part of the Zoom meeting, I should say, to report, uh, on the, uh, the audit report for the Earn Income Tax Bureau's, uh, financial statements for the, uh, year ended December 31st, 2019. Uh, they did issue a clean opinion. Uh, there were no financial statement findings and there was one compliance finding, which was actually, uh, related to their software and will be resolved when the new software is, uh, is put in place. Uh, and the board did approve that, that report and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, Shane, this is Rick Hoffmaster. That new Amazon billing, did you figure out how much tax money we'd be getting from there?
I did not. I mean, it hasn't been a change in the assessment so far, so I don't. At this point, I'd say it's no change really, other than, uh, the transfer tax we'll get.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. PSBA liaison, Mr. Otto Boyd.
Yes, there's been a lot of information just coming out. Everybody's been getting emails about what they've been doing just relative to, uh, opening schools and coronavirus. So, nothing for me to report other than keep reading what you're getting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Millenburg Community Library, Mr. Randall Madera.
Yes, I haven't gotten any reports about their meetings, but they did, uh, have a Zoom meeting Monday about the damage. I know Rick asked about damage and, uh, I think they're being denied an insurance claim because it was a flood. Uh, but I'm sure things will progress from there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Millenburg Township Laureldale Borough Liaison, Mr. Tony Lapia.
Yes, folks, uh, as mentioned by Rick Hoffmaster, Amazon has purchased the old, uh, well, not really old, but the old, uh, Decca building off of Serfanus Road, uh, as another, uh, stocking facility or distribution center for Amazon. It will bring, uh, uh, estimated 600 employees, uh, uh, between two shifts and, uh, also, uh, carb, carbon light, uh, factory, which is a, on Route 61, uh, is soon set ready to open and they're taking applications for employees at $15 an hour uh, to start out with. Uh, so that's another business that, uh, we're looking forward to. They're also going to open up a, a, a warehouse for, uh, behind the Walmart, north, the Temple Walmart, uh, not a warehouse, but sort of like a partnering facility for the plastic, uh, recycling plant, carbon light. And that will be, I have no information on that yet, but, uh, uh, we're, we're going to welcome Amazon to our community, so that's all I have to offer.
Thank you, that's great news. Uh, moving on to educational program, Dr. Futri.
I have no report this evening, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Solicitor's comments.
What'd you get?
I have nothing, I have nothing, I have nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's comments.
Okay, uh, I just want to thank everybody. I just want to thank everybody here this evening, um. Uh, this has just been an incredible journey. I ask everyone to, to be with us in spirit. And, uh, to all the parents and all our kids. I'm with you in mind, heart and soul. And there isn't going to be the right thing made here for everybody, I know that. Uh, we all know that. I will be asking, uh, the Solicitor, uh, Brian here, uh, at one point here, when we get to the items here, we're going to have to draft the, a resolution regarding the, the option that's picked. And, uh, I'll have Dan put that up, so we're going to approve the Health and Safety Plan, that'll get approved. Then we will then also have a resolution for the option that is chosen and exactly what it is. So the board will be voting on that, those two items and there will be a resolution. Uh, that's how the business has been conducted, uh, and we'll ask the, the Solicitor to do that. Brian, you on board?
Yes.
Okay. And there would be then, depending on that, if you just hang with me, there'll be a resolution to adjust the school calendar as well, but we'll wait till we get there. And once again, I want to thank everybody, to all of you that called in. I, I know our board members, I said the other day that just the responsibility and that weight on their shoulders. I have had conversations with them and they've been, uh, they, everybody cares. And, uh, we're going to get through this, we're going to get through this. Uh, and I, I can't tell you how much I, I hurt for your kids. As one, as one, let's get through this. Uh, that's all, that's all I have to say right now. Uh, make a recommend, if you're asking me for a recommendation, I'll be making one to you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to number eight, personnel. Resolution number 21A through 21U. 21A, accepted for the resignation, 21B professional appointment, 21C classified appointment, 21D mentor appointment. 21E special education technology facilitator for 2021 school year. Uh, we're going to pull 21F for a separate move. Resolution 21G. Uh, AF, uh, Junior ROTC instructor salary for the 2021 school year. 21H award professional employee contract, 21I is, uh, bus monitor for the 2021 school year. 21K health service for the 2021 school year.
Oh, there it is, there you have it.
You did. Why didn't you use the picture?
Okay, hey, Mr. Uh, Mr. President, if you can make sure everybody is muted and making sure you're speaking clearly in, into the mic on what the resolution is, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Everybody muted. 21K grade level leader for the 2021 school year. 21L Department Chairperson for the 2021 school year. Resolution 21M substitute pay rate. 21N substitute for the 2021 school year. 21O guest teachers for the 2021 school year. Resolution 21P summer hours for professional staff. Resolution 21Q bus drivers, BCIU aides in the, for the 2120 school year. 21R pay rate for the Laureldale Crossing Guards for the 2021 school year. Resolution 21S co-curricular resignation. Resolution 21T fall 2020 coaching assignments. And resolution 21U workout compensation. Resolution 21A through resolution 21E and resolution 21G through resolution 21U. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, we can't hear you.
Yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Hoffmesser.
Yes.
Heinemann.
Yes.
Lupia.
Yes.
Madera.
Yes.
Mangle.
Yes.
Mangle.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Voight.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Going back up to 8.06, resolution 21F, salaries for professional staff for the 2021 school year. Is there a motion?
Voight moves.
Thank you.
Lupia, second.
Roll call, please.
Hardy.
Yes.
Hoffmesser. Hoffmesser.
Oh, I stand.
Heinemann.
I believe I have to abstain on this one, is that correct?
Yes. Lupia.
Yes.
Madera.
Yes.
Mangle.
Yes.
Nelson. Nelson.
Oh, sorry, I'm staying.
Voight.
Yes.
Rose. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to double check, Brian, must I stay on my daughter-in-law? Works.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, moving on to number nine, management. Resolution 22 through resolution 25. Resolution 22, 2021 annual membership to the Burks Business Education Coalition. Resolution 23, representatives for the Burks County Schools Health Trust Consortium. Resolution 24, voting delegates to the 2020 PSBA delegate assembly, which would be Otto Voight and Rick Hoffmesser. And resolution 25, adoption of policies. Is there a motion?
Hoffmesser make motion.
Mangle second.
Thank you.
Before, before we do that, is that resolution, that one we're voting on, is that the one that Dr. Matirola read?
That's 25.
Yes. Say again?
That's number 25.
Okay, could you pull that one out, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Otto, I think you're thinking of the anti-racism equity statement, that 16.
Right.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in this group.
Okay, thank you, then don't pull it out.
Yeah, that's not.
Thank you.
25 is Title IX.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hoffmesser.
Yes.
Heinemann.
Yes.
Lupia.
Yes.
Madera. Madera.
Guess he's having trouble.
Mr. Kara.
Yes.
Mangle.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Voight.
Yes.
Gross. Yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number 10, physical plant and transportation, there's no items. Moving on to number 11, the budget, the finance, resolution 26 through resolution 29. Resolution 26, approval of financial reports. 27, certification of unpaid interim change tax bills for section year 2019. Resolution 28, disposable of surplus property. And then, resolution 29, employee assistant program services agreement. Is there a motion?
Hoffmesser make motion.
Heinemann second.
Voight second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, roll call, please.
Heinemann.
Yes.
Lupia.
Yes.
Madera.
Yes.
Mangle.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Voight.
Yes.
Rose. Yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Hoffmesser.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Resolution.
Mr. Hardy. Mr. Hardy, if I, if I may, before we get into 12.01, I'm going to ask Dan, Dan, would you put the slide up on the three options? And then I'd ask President Hardy. Bear with me here a minute. This has to be done first. Okay, there are three pathways for opening schools. And pathway one, which Dr. Futrick has had reviewed here and I articulated earlier. That would be a full traditional with virtual school option. All staff and students on site, students will have MSD virtual school option. Pathway two, hybrid, two days in-person, three days virtual, students split into group one and group two. Pathway three, full virtual learning, all staff on site and all students offsite. So Counselor Bowlin, if there's anything here that you need to direct me on, but I would ask President Hardy to cast a vote to the nine board members to choose one of those pathways. And we're going to use, since the terminology is pathway instead of option, we're going to use that terminology in the, in the resolution. Then depending upon the vote, we're going to have to have another resolution just to adjust the school calendar. If it's pathway three, if the board is asking for anything else from me in terms of recommendation, I think I made that, at least all of us positioned with that, and you heard all the information. Is there anything, Counselor Bowlin, that, that needs to be articulated in addition to that?
No, or do you want one of those pathways to be the resolution? In other, in other words, have the board vote on pathway three, full virtual learning? Find out if it passes and then go to pathway two, pathway one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, go ahead.
If it's, if it's the will of the chair, I would make a motion to accept pathway number three.
Yes, that's the, the, the option that we would vote for, so.
I will second it.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
I'd like to make a comment before I vote. This is by far the most concerning and troubling issue the school board has discussed in the years that I've been on the board. Personally, I would like to open our classrooms and offer virtual learning for our students that are just not ready to go back to the classroom. There are many issues to consider in deciding our action. I'm concerned that all the students may not have adequate access to the internet. I'm concerned that some students cannot learn effectively in a virtual environment. I'm concerned about the working parents and the problems that this will cause. And I'm concerned about our students getting behind and not advancing a full grade level. With all these concerns, I will vote with the board to keep our board working towards one common goal, that being getting back to normal as soon as possible.
Mr. Hardy.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Jared.
Did I make a brief comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I am going to vote for pathway number three. But if this is inappropriate for a board member, please have the solicitor tell me so. I really, I really feel great emotion for people who are both working and have very young students being at home alone. And if as a board member, I might be allowed to help find a solution for that, I would like to, if this is the right word, volunteer my input.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm not giving the input now, but when they look for solutions, possibly be part of the group that's looking to solve that problem. Because I have a great deal of empathy for the parents that are going through that.
Right, I understand, so.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is Otto, and I want to, I want to thank Mr. Gross for his comments, and I fully embrace them. And also the same with Mr. Heinemann, and I, I share his same thoughts. It, it pains me greatly to have to vote for option three because I, I believe all of us feel and the community feels that we need to get back to school. Because there, there are some students that will be far behind, many parents, like Mr. Gross said, that'll be in a very difficult position. But I, I think through the, the governor or lack of effort from the, the governor doesn't leave us with much option. And I think for the first marking period, number three is the safest way to go. But I want to assure everybody and everybody in the community that come October meeting, you know, I hope we're in a position to be able to vote for number one, and that's a full return to school in the second, second quarter marking period. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, I agree wholeheartedly, it's, it's a tough decision. It's not one we like to make. I know I have grandkids in school that are going through the same thing, and it's not an easy thing. And I'm concerned about them as much as any of the other kids in this school district, so. I know it's tough decision, but hopefully in October, we can go back to full traditional opening. That's what we're shooting for.
May I make a comment, President Hardy?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I think we're letting this virus take the best of us here. We're frightened, I realize that. But by the same token, we have to be brave and strong with this decision. And if we're concerned about charter schools taking over and they're accepting students, then I think Muhlenberg should accept students. And, you know, if they're going to do it, we're going to do it. If we're concerned about working parents and, you know, them having to stay home, then they should make the decision whether they should send their children to school. If we're concerned about the the special needs student and the special ed student, we should have the teachers in there because, you know, doing it virtually with some of these students is, is virtually impossible. And, and I'd like to tell you about my parents who went to school in the middle of a world war. You know, they had to go to school. And, and the walk to school was path with great dangers. They didn't know whether they went around the corner there was a soldier there with a gun, or they were walking across a field and they hear an airplane, they didn't know whether it was friend or foe. And, and they still went to school despite the danger. I think we're letting this virus get the best of us. I think we should hit it headstrong. You know, and, and, and we have to let the parents make the decision for their kids. And for that reason, I will vote no on pathway three.
Yeah, Mr. Hardy, this is Mr. Voight, I have a question for Dr. Matirola. Should, should the board ultimately choose number one? What is the position of, would we have the support of the unions?
No. Of course, we would have to ask him, I, I highly doubt it with PSCA. We can't safe distance, we cannot meet under the matrix that has been submitted from the governor's office and the Department of Health. We can't meet that. And if we go option number one, and believe me, I want that more than you can imagine, we'd have to ask the, the board to hold harmless all the administrators, the two commissioned officers for any potential issues that will come out of that. We cannot safe distance, we cannot implement pathway one effectively under the guidelines that we have now.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Matirola, as a result. And, and Tony, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. However, you know, in light of the support to the very people that'll be in the classroom, and without the support of the governor, you know, this, this is something that we should hold off on for the second quarter, therefore I'll maintain my vote a yes for option three.
We're just letting the virus, we're just letting the virus take us over.
Tony, this is not letting the virus take it over. This is nothing that we've ever seen before.
Right.
And there's 160,000 people in the US that have died because of it. This is, it's not anything that anybody wants to do. We're not heading, you know, we're not running scared from it, it's a, it's a problem. And until there's a vaccine, we're going to continue to have this problem.
Mr. Hardy, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
We got nine board members on here, and everybody don't want nobody to go to school, get sick or pass away or anything like that. It's tough to make a decision, but we're going to do the right thing. Everybody's going to do the right thing for the kids not to go to school. If the kids go to school and get sick and take that home, somebody in their family will get sick. Like Mr. Nelson just say, nobody ever saw this before, nobody. It's a tough thing, we cannot leave kids go to school. And especially need kids, we go try to get help for them kids. But we can't afford kids going to school and get sick. And the teachers go to school with kids there and that, our staff people, we can't.
Thank you, I, I agree, we need to look out for everybody's well-being and safety and it's just a decision you don't want to make. And you're, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, so I mean, it is what it is, but we gotta, we gotta live with it right now.
Good. Call the question, please.
So Solicitor Bowlin, we'd have a, a resolution. President Hardy will ask the board to vote for approval of pathway three, full virtual learning, all staff on, on site and all students offsite.
And, and to submit the, and to submit the course funding plan to PDE.
Yes, sir. That would be linked to that, and then I would have to ask you if this is successful. Just another resolution to adjust the school calendar from October 12th to August 27th, a clerical day, August 28th, to help our teachers prepare. Do you want me to go through that again with your counselor?
Yeah, no, no. Did you want that as part of this resolution or as a second resolution?
A second resolution, sir.
Yeah, okay. So we can do this first one, and then we can do the second one.
Yeah, thank you, counselor.
Okay, just, just so we're clear. Resolution 30 is that we're going to approve Pathway, Pathway Three and the approval of the phased reopening health and safety plan. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody was clear.
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Hardy, all yours.
Okay, is there a?
We have a motion.
We have a motion, second.
We have a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll, roll call, please.
Madera.
Yes.
Mangle.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Boyd.
Yes.
Rose. Yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Hoffmaster.
Yes.
Heineman. Heineman.
Sorry, yes.
Lupia.
Okay, yes, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Moving on to.
Hold on, we, one more. Counselor Bullen, the second resolution to adjust the school calendar. We're taking October 12th to August 27th and a clerical day for August 28th.
Correct. So be, it would be a motion to approve the revision to the school calendar as presented.
Okay, very good. Mr. Hardy? Yes, sir. Thank you, counselor.
Is there a motion?
Don't move, Heineman.
Mangle, second.
Nelson, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Madera. Madera.
Yes.
Mangle.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Boyd.
Yes.
Rose. Yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Hoffmaster.
Yes.
Heineman.
Yes.
Lupia.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Moving on to resolution number 31, COVID-19 emergency declaration. Resolution 32, approval of Muhlenberg School District Emergency Instructional Time Temple for the 2021 school year. Resolution 33, students can begin 2020 school year as a non-resident student. Resolution 34, service and access and management incorporated linkage letter. Is there a motion?
Nelson, move.
Hoffmaster, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mangle.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Boyd.
Yes.
Rose. Yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Hoffmaster.
Yes.
Heineman.
Yes.
Lupia.
Yes.
Madera.
Okay, thank you.
Madera. Madera.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, before you move on, I just have one quick question. Dr. Matirola, now that we've made the decision on pathway three, how do we, how are we communicating that to staff and to the parents?
Mark, tomorrow, we had a conversation today and we planned out what, what steps we're gonna take. We're going to, Dr. Futrick's gonna be pulling in the, the coaches for professional development. He's, he has things lined up in the morning. I am going to get the message out by a connect ed call. I didn't make my, my mind up if I'm gonna do a connect ed or, or a personal video. I, I think they might be happy either way, just to let them know. And that will be done tomorrow, no later than Friday. We have to shore a couple of things up tomorrow morning, make sure we have our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. And then the ball will start rolling with the principals, reaching out to all the staff and the teachers, and there's a plan that, that was put together on each one of those items. It will start rolling tomorrow. If, if the, I, I'm certain I'm gonna get the message out tomorrow and not Friday. I just don't know if I want to do a connect ed or like a, a video, like where you can see me.
Dr. Matirola. I was just gonna say, I mean, it, this has been a hot topic on everywhere, obviously. And the sooner the better for certainly the parents and, and the staff.
Yeah, I'm gonna meet with Dr. Futrick and, and my team in the morning, and I couldn't agree more with you. I, I get it out tonight. That's a little late.
Listen, that would probably be okay as well. Just a quick, hey, we decided to go virtual.
You know what?
You did a good, good morning, fine, of course.
Not a bad idea. Dan, can you help me out with that? No, Dan Houck. No, tonight.
You know, you did a.
It is 10:50, so.
I'll do it in the morning.
Right. I have to say, you did a good job in the video last time. I think it'd be a nice thing to do a video. Everybody comment how great that video was last time. I'd like to do a video.
To ease everybody's fear and solidify, you know, what's going on, I would send a, a quick connect call or whatever it is you want to do tonight, saying, hey, here's what we decided to do. Here's when we're gonna start. I'll send out more information tomorrow.
Uh, yeah, you know what? If, I, I appreciate that. We will, I'll get something out tonight. I got the tech guy right here. And then, and we are safe distancing. And I, I will, you know what? How about I get that out tonight, and then by Friday, I, I send something out because we have a couple of things to get, and they'll have more information, but I'll get something out tonight. How's that work?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep, that works.
All right.
Okay, moving on. Moving on to number 13, student activities. There's no items. Moving on to number 14, the minutes. Resolution 36, approval of minutes. Resolve that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of July 8, 2020 and the regular meeting of July 8, 2020 be approved as submitted. Is there a motion?
Motion, Heineman.
Lupia, second.
Boyd, second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The A's have it, so. Is there any old business? There is none. New business, resolution number 37, resolution 1501, 36, anti-racism and equality statement. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you. Fair second.
Nelson, second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Hey, well, well, before we get to roll call, I would ask that Dr. Matirola reread the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
The resolution, which item, Mr. Boyd? The anti-racism?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, just a moment, sir. Okay, the, the resolution would read to, to be approved as presented. And are you asking me to, to read this again?
Yes. I want to make sure I understand what I'm voting for or voting against.
Recent events, protests, and discussions around racial injustice throughout our country have sparked increased, an urgent dialogue among community leaders to fight racism and address pressing issues of social injustices. The education community is no different. The 18 Berks County School Districts, the two Career and Technology Centers, and the Berks County Intermediate Unit are committed to providing safe and inclusive learning and working environments where racism is not tolerated and equity is the standard for the more than 70,000 students here in Berks County, their families, and our teachers and staff. Collectively, we share concern our overhaul systemic racism and social injustices are impacting our Berks County schools in the community. As education leaders, we are obligated to have productive conversations around inequities and the work that needs to be done to address them. Furthermore, we are committed to deep, sometimes difficult reflection on our routine practices and assumptions that might otherwise go unexamined. Over the years, measures have taken to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools, and yet we still have much work to do. We believe that education will ultimately create the equitable society all students deserve. Schools can provide every student with opportunities for success, navigate for social injustice by ensuring equity and access to high-quality education by providing safe and supportive learning environments, and by recognizing the intrinsic value of every individual regardless of race, culture, sexual identity, disability, or economic status. We must take responsibility for transforming the knowledge, beliefs, and practices that act as obstacles to student learning and staff development. We must be vigilant to finding solutions and creating action for substantive change in the areas that we as education leaders can control. In addition, we must ensure that our schools and workplaces serve as safe places where everyone has had the same level of opportunity to pursue their education, excel in their career, and live their lives productively as they go about their daily activities. We recognize that statements are, are not enough, and it is imperative for us individually and collectively to proactively influence and enact change. Therefore, in addition to individual school district policies and actions where we are collectively committing the following items to eliminate racism and promote equity within the Berks County education community, we will continue to establish and sustain school communities that share the collective responsibility to address, eliminate, and prevent actions, decisions, and outcomes that result from and perpetuate racism. We will evaluate policies and protocols to ensure that they advance our goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We will continue to encourage our stakeholders to focus decisions impacting our education community to include recognition of equity and diversity within our communities. We will enlist the support of community experts and stakeholders to help our districts and school leaders examine their equity practices. We will work strategically on recruiting, retaining, developing, and advancing a diverse workforce. We will offer ongoing education and professional development for our students and staff to continue building capacity in diversity, equity, and inclusion strategies. Diversity, equity, respect, and inclusion are paramount to our education community, and as leaders, we are committed to take active steps to reflect this dedication in all the work we do in our districts and schools. We lend our voice and join our partners within and beyond education to battle racism and equity in all forms, signed by all district superintendents and Berks County Intermediate Unit and Career and Technology Center.
Okay, who, who wrote that?
All 18 superintendents participated in that, in, in the, the other.
Okay, could you, all right, okay. There's one sentence in there. If you could reread it, having to do with systemic racism. Can you read that sentence? Because I'd like to make a, a motion for an amendment.
All right, you have to hold on. Is it in the beginning?
I'm sorry to take the poor spot, but this is super, super important.
Collectively, we share concern over how systemic racism and social injustices are impacting our Berks County schools in the community.
Okay, I, go ahead.
As education leaders, we are obligated to have productive conversations around these inequities.
Uh, okay, keep going.
And the work that needs to be done to address them. Furthermore, we are committed to.
Is, is that the, basically the end of the, uh, the systemic racism and inequity portion?
No. No, there's a whole way through. If you want, we can scratch this. What I'd like to do, this is the way to do this. How about, how about we just take this off, and everybody take a hard look at it? And if you want to approve it next month, fine. If not, then we'll be the one district that's not on here, but I, I'm certainly receptive to that.
Okay, I, I, okay, I'm only one vote.
I'm uncomfortable now. I'm uncomfortable now, because.
Well, I think we should, I think we should vote on it. That will look good. If we're the only district, then vote on it.
Don't we have a motion in a second?
Yeah, I think we got to vote on this.
Yep.
Hi, Mr.?
Yes, there was, there was motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. You can always. Yeah, we have a motion in a second for, for the statement as it's written.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Mr. President? Okay, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution to eliminate the sentence referencing these, the systemic racism, okay, that is in public schools, because at Muhlenberg, there is no place for hate, and we do not have systemic racism, okay, in our school district. And I'm not gonna vote yes to say there is. What goes on in other school districts is there, so I make a motion to amend the resolution to take out that sentence.
Rose, second the motion.
Okay.
Well, the, the question is, would the first and the second, Mr. Hoffmaster and Mr. Nelson, agree to the amendment of the motion to remove the reference to systemic racism in Berks County schools?
No. Mr. Nelson does not agree.
Okay.
Okay, who was the other one? About to make any votes, right?
You're right.
Well, yeah.
You guys just keep it away. Yeah, it's cool.
All right, Mr. President? Right, Mr. President, I make a motion to table the resolution until next meeting.
We can't.
Yes, you can. I make a motion to table it until the next meeting.
I believe we have a motion to vote on this.
No, I also have a motion to table it. You can vote no.
But your motion came after. The motion that came first. Well, a motion, a motion to table would take precedent for the motion laying on the table at this moment. So the first vote then would be to whether or not you want to table it. If that motion fails, then you vote on this underlying motion.
We make a motion to table it.
So Otto has made a motion to table it, so there would be a. So Otto has made a motion to table it, so there would be a roll call vote on the motion to table. If you vote yes, you're tabling it. If you vote no, you want to go back and vote on the resolution. Okay?
I cannot believe this.
We don't have a second yet for Otto's motion.
I second it.
Okay.
Okay, roll call for the table.
Now, this is a roll call vote on the table motion.
Right.
Voight. Voight.
Yes.
Rose. Yes. Hardy.
Yes.
Hoffmaster.
No.
Heineman.
No.
Lupia.
No.
Madera.
Yes.
Mangle.
No.
Nelson.
No.
Okay, then the motion is back on the, on the table and that is the most, the underlying motion to, um, pass this resolution. You would have a roll call vote.
Right. Uh, and mister, mister president, since the motion is coming to the floor, I will accept that. Of course, I have to. But for the record, so everybody knows, I agree with that entire letter. And just because eighteen school districts and everybody else is saying, you know, is playing a political correctness game, I will vote no because I do not believe there is systemic racism at Muhlenberg. And I will agree, I will not agree to something that the administration and the teachers and the students work hard every single day to eliminate racism and Muhlenberg is no place for hate and it's no place for racism. I will vote no.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Rose. No. Hardy.
No.
Hoffmaster.
Yes.
Heineman.
Yes.
Lupia.
Yes.
Madera.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Yes. Voight.
No.
I have to, I voted, I voted no, I wanted. I voted.
I think it's five, four, yeah, five, four to accept the.
Yes.
Thanks.
Can we have a re-vote?
It's a five, four vote.
Yeah, Tom, you voted no for the statement.
Right, that's five, four.
Are you saying that you want to vote yes for the resolution, Tom? For the statement? We were voting on the resolution now for the statement. Did you want to vote yes?
It was five, it was five, four.
Okay.
Yeah. Five, four. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to fifteen, is there any old business?
I mean.
I'm sorry. Moving on to number seventeen, is there a hearing of visitors? Hearing none of us. Moving on to number eighteen, Muhlenberg School District, Reading Muhlenberg's D C Board Visitor of the Month. All of there. Moving on to number nineteen, review the board meeting and calendar of events.
I just have one thing before we, before we finish the meeting. I just have a question now that we're going virtual. What does that mean for the custodian and the caf- cafeteria staff as far as staffing? Because we won't have all those students in those, in the classrooms. Um, will the, will the cafeteria staff and custodian staff be cut back because we won't need them in the buildings as much? Or how is that going to be handled?
Uh, Mrs. Mangle, the, uh, the, the maintenance and custodians, uh, are working all the time right now because we have to assure and make sure our buildings are clean uh, and, and taking care of the campus. They have been working from the onset of COVID, uh, uh, nineteen, so they will continue to be working in the capacity that they are. Uh, and they are very busy, let me tell you. And we have projects here that we're taking care of. Nobody's sitting around. The cafeteria will be on a, we're, we're going to work that out. It will, it will be on a rotation or a skeleton crew. Um, so that they're able to provide the meals for, uh, the, um, the, the staff. Now, we're, we're sticking our toe in the water with this, you know, uh, we're going to see how this works out. And, uh, so that we're accurate, we'll, we'll take, uh, Kerry will be working with them to get a menu out, you know, the day before or two days before. To get a count for how many people are going to be there. Once we get through, you know, a, a few days on this, we'll, we'll know, we'll know pretty much where we are and then we'll be able to staff that adequately from that standpoint. So there will be cafeteria workers coming in. How many at this time? Uh, I don't know. I don't think it'll be everyone that's there all the time, so we don't know how we're going to rotate that, but the custodians and staff have been here working full time, full status, and believe me, they are busy. Uh, we still have things going on with, you know, you know, here that requires that disinfection.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have something to say. I just want to thank the administration, the teachers and the committee for a great job they did for this tough job we did in school board, too, denying people to vote on this. And the whole thing is, what we just did for almost three hours talking about school that, that won't be in the front page of paper, what's going to be in the paper tomorrow is something was about harassment, discrimination. That's what's going to make us look bad. But the whole thing comes down to, it's only one small thing. We don't have nothing against discrimination or nothing. We got to make sure we get that right in the newspaper.
I would, uh, this is Otto. I agree. Well, I agree with Rick Sediment to thank the administration, to thank the teachers, to thank the janitors, the, the support team, the secretaries who have and, and will continue to work hard on behalf of our students. Uh, the resolution will speak for itself. Muhlenberg does not have systemic racism. I don't care if it's a headline, but it should be about the kids and the great things that are happening at Muhlenberg that we don't believe in racism. We don't believe in hate and we practice uh, it every single day at Muhlenberg. So my, uh, my compliments to the entire, uh, staff on a job well done.
I'm glad you said that, Otto. That's nice.
All right, moving on, moving on to, uh, number twenty, Resolution Thirty-Eight. Uh, Make a resolution to adjourn the meeting, resolve that there be no further business to come before the board, the meeting be adjourned. Is there a motion?
I motion.
Second, Heineman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hey, Mark Nelson, the, the market is safe.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Tony, what was that?